...
Eo.
Johnson. Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski?
Here.
Coburn?
Here.
Kanopa?
Here, and Johnson is excused. Thank you so much. Okay. First, we have a special presentation this evening, and I think that's what most of the folks are here for, so this is wonderful that we're able to give some recognition for a very good deed in our community, and Chief Braden, I think you'll give the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Kanopa. So tonight, we want to recognize six individuals in our community who went above and beyond. They saw an individual, witnessed an individual going into cardiac arrest, and they took action that ultimately ended up saving this individual's life. So the following six individuals would come forward. Mitch Johnston, Eric Davis, oh, I'm sorry, Mike Davis, Eric Russe, Jay Poppleton, Angela Miller, and Mark Wagner. If you just want to kind of stand right over here, that'd be great. So these individuals, there, just go right there. These individuals all work at Bercham's Metals on Pacific Boulevard, and on Monday, January 22nd, at about 9:19 in the morning, a customer of theirs, as I understand it, a well-known customer of theirs, came in, dropped to the ground, and went into cardiac arrest. And as the story's been told to me, within seconds, one of you was down checking his pulse and determined that CPR needed to be delivered and that 911 needed to be called, and the rest of the employees all went into action to prepare the way for us, so that way when we got there, we would know exactly where to go, we'd know exactly what we needed to do as far as being able to continue rendering care to the individual who collapsed. And so today, we just want to recognize each one of you for taking the actions that you did and helping save this individual, Mike Murphy's, life who went into cardiac arrest. As a fire department, we're so dependent on the public and citizens like these six individuals to take action, to step up, and to start rendering care, and in this case, delivering CPR before we get there. It takes us, you know, and this call took us five minutes from the time the 911 call came in before we could get there, and so with their actions, we were able to actually participate in that chain of survival and help save this individual's life. So I would like to recognize each one of you tonight with a Fire Department Challenge coin. It's a life-saving coin that we issue for these types of events, and thank you for the actions that each one of you took. So with that, I'd like to give you a coin.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you. You got it. Thank you.
And would any, do you like to say anything at all about the event? You don't have to, but...
Feel free. Tell us, brother.
I don't want to say anything about the event, but I want to give special recognition to Jay Bercham for preparing us for something like this to happen. We don't ever expect something like this to happen, but with his commitment to having all of us go through training and participate, we were ready to take action, and I just want to say thank you, Jay, and that's all.
Okay. Great. So I would like to reiterate also what he said. Thank you, Jay, for taking this seriously. It'd be very easy to say, oh, this is never going to happen in my place of employment, or it won't impact my employees, but you took it seriously. You trained your employees, and as I understand it from the way you described it to me the other day, you actually drilled with them and talked with them about what would they do in just such a circumstance, and so thank you very much for taking that seriously. The last thing I wanted to do is I want to recognize the individual whose life saved, say, Mike Murphy is here, he's in the back row. If you could just stand up, Mike, we'd like to acknowledge you.
Congratulations for following up.
My angels in there.
Well, Mike, we're really glad that you're here. We appreciate the fact that they did what they did and that the medics were able to continue that care.
There are, there we go, yes.
So Shannon was actually on the call, and she was part of the care that saved your life that day, so thank you, Shannon, as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, and you know, all of us know Jay Bercham, and he's just one of our angels in our community because he's so supportive of many programs and does so much for our community. We can really see tonight that you trained many angels that work for you, so we really appreciate all that you have done for our community and such wonderful employees that you do have at Bercham's Metals, so thank you, Jay. Thank you, everyone. Did you want to say anything, Jay?
Yes, I do.
I knew he was. I think I know him well enough. No, come on up, can you come up to the microphone?
Sure.
Yeah. We always love to hear from Jay.
Just pull it off, the deal there.
Yeah, if you can pull it off.
Pull it out of there.
Is it on? Okay. I was over in Lebanon at the time at a chamber meeting, and I had two employees off, so we were shorthanded, and everyone did exactly what they were supposed to do, and it was just awesome, and I'm not trying to be boastful whatsoever, but I was so proud. I was just so proud of each and every one that was standing up here today, and for Mike Murphy and his bride Lori. You folks need to know that on Monday, this took place, as the chief said. Friday, he went home from the Corvallis Hospital. Tuesday, Lori and Mike showed up with two cheesecakes that she made, and with some hugging and some tears and laughter, they visited with the six folks that helped Mike so much. And so I just want to say again publicly to the employees, thank you so much, and in this case, you saved a life, and I know the professionals face this often, but we don't, and this is something that you'll remember the rest of your lives, and I'm just proud, so thank you.
Oh, that's wonderful, yeah. Thank you, Jay. And actually, we heard about it at our council meeting that afternoon when Counselor Sykes had, came in because he ended up knowing Mike, and it was quite a shock to you, yeah.
Well, I don't have to find another employee now.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, all right, yeah. Thank you, folks, thank you. Okay. We have scheduled business of a public hearing this evening, so on our agenda is a quasi-judicial public hearing regarding a street vacation for a portion of Ninth Avenue right-of-way west of Jackson Street and east of the center line of Railroad Street, and the east half of the railroad street right-of-way north of Ninth Avenue to the railroad tracks as described in Planning File Number VC-0317. I call to order this quasi-judicial public hearing at about 7:29 PM. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the city clerk. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest?
I declare a conflict of time. Seven twenty-four.
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-four. Yeah, so good catch, thank you. I'm ahead of myself.
Not probably a problem.
Any members? Yeah. The only thing is, I have met with the owners of the property, and it was just at an event, but we talked about past histories, so, but not of this specific item, so, okay. Does any, do any members wish to report any ex parte contact, which that's what I just stated on that, anyone? Okay. Do any members wish to report a site visit? And do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? And does anyone wish to challenge the participation of any council member in this hearing and decision? And for those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards. Staff will describe or other criteria in the Comprehensive Plan or Development Code which you believe to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the City Council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. At this time, I call for the staff report. Gordon?
Okay, as the council will remember, you initiated this vacation at our request, at staff's request, back in January or December. It's Ninth Avenue west of Jackson Street and the eastern half of Railroad Street, just west of Ninth Avenue. It all started with a request from the Van Vleets to use part of the right-of-way for an expansion of their facility. They'd like to expand, and they're hemmed in by the right-of-way, and they have setbacks from the right-of-way, and they asked if we could vacate that street to facilitate their expansion. Staff looked at the situation and didn't see any reason why we could not vacate that right-of-way. This is a view looking down Ninth Avenue. You can see right now, it's a gravelled street that's pretty much used just for access to Van Vleets and to the property to the south. They treat it as a, as an entryway. They park on both sides, but the cars that are there are mostly parked in the right-of-way. The right-of-way comes up, almost right up to buildings on both sides. This is a site plan showing what Van Vleets proposed to do on their site. A little busy, but, anyway, they plan on paving the street, most of it, the center line, the center part of it, and also putting in parking stalls and truck bays for pulling trucks in and backing into their new addition to their facility, and also parking in the railroad right-of-way portion that's going to be vacated, so that's what they plan on doing. I should mention that if, for some reason, they didn't go ahead with their plan and didn't do this expansion, we'd still have vacated the right-of-way, and in staff's opinion, that's just fine. We don't want to maintain that gravelled street anymore, anyway. It basically just serves the two properties, north and south of the street, and it serves as an access for the railroad to get to the railroad tracks, so even if, for some reason, the Van Vleets proposal doesn't go forward, we're fine with going forward with the street This shows where the properties would go if we vacated the street. The yellow line is the dividing line of the new property lines, once the street's vacated, so everything north, the north half of Ninth Avenue would go to the Van Vleets, everything south of their center line would go to the property to the south, RMC Holdings LLC, and then the eastern half of the railroad street right-of-way that's being vacated would also go to the Van Vleets. This map shows the existing utilities out there. The green lines are the sanitary sewer, the blue is public water, and the, I call it pink, is storm drainage. So you can see, there's actually quite a bit of utilities in the right-of-way. Part of the plan with the Van Vleets expansion, as you can see, there's a sewer line running under the building, and their new building would go over this part of the sewer. Part of the plan is to actually reroute the sewer from here down south to Ninth and around, and back up over this way, so that there won't be a sewer under the new building or the old building anymore. And in order to do that, we need to retain easements over the right-of-way they were talking about vacating. So this is what is in the ordinance right now, is that we would retain a utility easement on the entire right-of-way that we're vacating. They'd be able to put in parking stalls and those truck bays and that sort of thing that they were proposing, but they could not put a building over it, so we could still build water lines, sewer lines, storm drainage lines in the easement, in the right-of-way that's being vacated. And also in the ordinance, we're retaining a 26-foot-wide accessway down the middle. There's, the right-of-way is 66 feet wide, so each property would have 20 feet north and south of the center to put in parking stalls, but the center 26 feet would remain an accessway. That would give them each access to drive through there, would also give the railroad access to their railroad yard, and the ordinance also calls for it to be in access for all emergency vehicles. Police and fire could also have that access easement. So that is what's, we're retaining, the access easement and the utility easement, and here I've listed the review criteria for a vacation. Staff and the planning commission have both looked at this and determined that they've met all the review criteria. At the planning commission meeting, there was no testimony. We received no testimony from anyone, no letters, no emails, no phone calls, so apparently no one's too upset about this, so, anyway, that's the end of my staff report, unless you have any questions.
Questions? Okay, all right. Okay, now, we will be taking public testimony. As I recognize you, please come to the podium, state your full name and address, spell your last name, and make any comments you may have for the council's consideration. If anyone wishes to enter and exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe it and then present it to the city clerk. And did anyone sign up? Allison? Okay, I think that was not on this item. Yeah, that wouldn't be on this one. Okay. All right. Does anyone wish to testify on the proposed amendment? Okay, not seeing anyone. And then, and let's see, so does anyone have any procedural questions they would like to raise at this time? Any questions of staff before we close the hearing?
Mayor, who would like to speak?
Oh, on the, on the street vacation?
On the gas tax.
Oh, that one's waived.
I did not, I did not, I signed up.
Okay, yeah, no, no, Gail, that'll be, that'll be later on the agenda. Okay, counsel? All right, so with that, I will close a public hearing at 7:33 PM, and counsel, you do have an ordinance that is on page five.
I move, City Council, adopt the ordinance to vacate portions of Ninth Avenue and Railroad Street as identified and conditioned in application VC-0317. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report to the planning commission and city council, and findings in support of the decision made by city council during deliberations on this matter.
Second.
Okay. Actually, we, so the motion is for adopting the ordinance, but then we're going to have to have you do a first reading on it, so let's just take action. Any discussion?
Doesn't he have to read it first?
We just did the motion for adopting it, but I think we're still going to have to read it.
Simply, we need to read the title before we adopt it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got out of sequence on that.
Okay, all right, let's just withdraw your motion at second for now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Would you like to read it on page five?
Oh, I've got it. An ordinance vacating a portion of the Ninth Avenue right-of-way west of Jackson Street to the center line of Railroad Street, and the east half of the railroad street right-of-way north of Ninth Avenue to the railroad tracks in Albany, Oregon, and declaring an emergency.
Move to have it read second time, title only?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Question? What's the, what's the emergency?
We'd like to get it done soon as possible.
I mean, is there, is this is holding something up?
Well, if it's not the emergency, then the vacation's going to have to hold for 30 days then, for the applicant, yeah.
Count me as a aye as well.
Okay, all right, now, motion for, second motion, or read the second.
Yep, we, got it?
Yeah.
Okay. An ordinance vacating a portion of the Ninth Avenue right-of-way west of Jackson Street to the center line of Railroad Street, and the east half of the railroad street right-of-way north of Ninth Avenue to the railroad tracks in Albany, Oregon, and declaring an emergency.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. I do think part of that motion needs to be added, Ray, when you did the motion about the findings and conclusions.
Oh, do you want me to just, okay, I'll read the whole thing again. I move, the City Council, adopt the ordinance to vacate portions of Ninth Avenue and Railroad Street as identified and conditioned in application VC-0317. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report to the planning commission and city council, and findings in support of the decision made by city council during deliberations on this matter.
Okay, and there was a second? Already?
Yes.
Okay, now, discussion. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, Gordon. With that, then, a quasi-judicial decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Okay, that takes care of that item, and next is business from the public, and we did have one scheduled person that wanted to come forward this evening, was Mr. Roger Asai, and I think we have to do some switching over of equipment first. So we've got to wait a few. Okay, so if you can state your name, spell your last name, and furnish your address, too.
Okay, my name is Roger Asai, last name spelled A-S-A-I, 1428 Art Careers.
Okay. Nope, that's it, thank you.
Okay, because, due to the time constraint, this is going to move pretty fast, so I don't expect we'll be able to get through everything, but if somebody could give me a warning after 10 minutes, or when I've got like five to go, then we can skip to the end.
Okay. I'll do that, yeah.
And then, but everybody will still have to find their documentation to look through at the laser and decide whether they think it's to be done. This all started with, when I got a ticket at Gary and Hill, and so I started looking at it.
Scary queen.
Yeah.
Yeah. We only have one camera in town.
Right, so even though I had put the wrong address in some correspondence, yeah, I did have to find out, okay, I'm sorry about that, but you've only got one camera in the intersection, so you know which one I was talking about. So, let's see. Sorry for the people in the audience that, because the enclosures aren't going to be coming up on the screen, just the slides, so, and it will go pretty fast, so, but you won't be able to see the documents that they're looking at in their folders. Okay, so, well, I've already, okay, well, yeah, my background's in accounting, so a lot of what I say, the accounting terminology, not law terminology, and in accounting, we don't generally use very strong words, so even when it's an important issue, they might just say, this is a damn problem. It's not that you don't swear or get excited, you just report, we're fine. Okay, so I, you know, I came across the information random order as I was trying to research what was going on with the ticket, and, but I tried to put everything here in chronological order, so that's the order that you guys would have been familiar with the process, and now it's doing catch-up, but, so we'll try to follow the order that it would appear to you guys in. Okay, so, from what I gather, it was October 2006, when the City of Albany approved RedFlex as a vendor for the police photo red light program. A few months later, we signed the contract with RedFlex, and represented by President and CEO Karen Finley at that time, and then two years later, the first report to the legislature on the program was submitted. On here, if it's in red, that means there's a subsequent screening. So the main key points, and you can see in your, because I've been a copy of your meeting notes at the time, and the main three things were that it was for remote safety, and there was one question raised procedurally about what the duration of the Ls would be, all the same or not, and it indicated that they would be, and that must be the case, and that they would be reviewed six months. So that's what you guys had decided or set at that point in time.
Is there a page number we can be looking at?
Okay, so the, they're not showing up on here. So that was, that was page four.
We haven't had a chance to look at this prior to now.
Right, so like, it's going to go pretty quick, so these would be, yeah, it's going to be, a lot of page turn. Okay, so the first report that was issued to the legislature, which, on the bottom right, on the top of the, this would be page five. So in your folders, it's about page 12, because of the documentation that's interspersed there, but the bottom right is page five. So the report itself, it says, there's a couple of significant things in this, because we're talking about safety, they were talking about change in behavior, and the report says, while it's still to early to determine the effect of cameras on driver behavior, patients issued in 2008 will serve as a good basis for future compares. That's right in the report, and that was submitted to the legislature. Further on in the same report, it says, in September 2008, Albany Police Department Traffic Officers, the Albany Municipal Court Judge, and the City Attorney reviewed the authorization process. The result is a more stringent standard for proven violations and a focus on the more serious safety issues. Even though they are valid violations, officers will routinely reject incidents in which the defendant stops in the crosswalk or after the stop line, and when the defendant comes to an almost complete stop. So that's what, so, but the problem there is that having changed the process after September, that means the whole year was not done the same, and yet, in that report and in subsequent reports, it refers to 2008 as though it were all the same. So it contains apples and oranges, and it's referred to and used as a baseline when it really shouldn't have been. So that's what accounts for it. So, um, that's what accounts for this. Look at this. Um, so there's four continued, um, the chart of citations, and so it has a chart there that's included there, and it should have shown in the, about three quarters over, that there was a change in process, and, as, as in the text of reported indications, so, but it doesn't, and then in subsequent reports, it just uses that baseline number of eleven nineteen as though that were all the same conditions in its form. Um, uh, so the average per month for the first nine months is a hundred and five, after the change, it drops to fifty-seven. So, there's a, the drop there has nothing to do with modified driver behavior as it's represented to in that report and in subsequent reports. It's strictly due to that procedure change, and subsequent, uh, like, subsequent reports don't mention it. Okay, so, uh, then, uh, a few months later, the council passed an ordinance establishing the, that Oregon criminal history record, record check policies concerning contractors licensed and for non-legal. So, it was important to the council at that point that criminal history checks be done on companies that were gonna be doing business with the city of Albany. Um, it does, uh, for some reason, there's, there's a cutoff for, of the city applicants that's not explained, um, I, and that, now I have my answer on the emergency clause, that's just that something's effective immediately, but I didn't understand that's what you, what that means.
It does get confusing.
Because, because it's expressed as, you know, an immediate preservation of the peace health and safety of the city, which, which sounds like a different thing, that sounds like a post nine eleven kind of Katrina thing, not, uh, you'd like to be effective immediately and so forth.
Yeah.
But.
You're not the only one that's questioning.
Based on a few minutes ago, now I understand.
Yeah.
Um, so then, uh, the next, uh, slide, okay, so two years after that, so the second report to the Oregon legislature, in that, in the section affected the use of cameras on traffic safety. So this is that, that one mistake I was explaining before, it says, in two thousand and eight, police department issued eleven nineteen citations, and, and then, in two thousand and nine, it dropped to six sixty-six. Well, uh, as I explained before, that wasn't actually a decrease, that's a slight increase at the pace of the fourth quarter of two thousand and eight, so, but it's represented here as being a meaningful decrease of forty percent. So, um, so actually, it was, it was pretty flat. Uh, okay, so around this same point in time, um, Red Flex is involved in a bit of a scandal that starts showing up in the papers in Chicago, and so this is, uh, I just have this information to show how long it took the city of Chicago to realize it had made a mistake and change its mind. So, um, in October two thousand and eleven, and the mayor that's there wasn't there when they first started the program, he was newly there, um, but it took just a little over a year before, uh, he changed his position on whether or not they should use Red Flex, and they stopped using. Um, yeah, so I didn't include a lot of the, you know, news art, news articles off of the internet, okay, all right, um, uh, so, um, we're gonna skip ahead a little here, um, not all the way to the end, because the most important thing, um, that I found was that, uh, there was a renewal on, uh, in August, so now we're up to, oh, I'm sorry, we're up to like fourteen, I'll take fourteen at the bottom. So, um, uh, the police department had asked, uh, the council, in its capacity as contractor duty, for wearing two hats, um, to approve that some early renewal, um, and that was part of a recorded meeting. And so I, I went on YouTube and I reviewed that meeting, and, um, and, uh, found that the testimony provided by the, the police department was inactive. The officer, who isn't identified there, but he is later in the minutes, Lieutenant Lynn, um, indicated that the contract had left, and there were a couple other things, he overstated the number of accidents, um, and, and remember him from the beginning here, the main reason for going this was to improve safety, and safety has not in fact changed, but it was represented to now. And so, my point to you is that you have to put on your city council hats instead of your contract review report hats you had that night, um, and review whether or not the board was voted, uh, to renew the contract early based on improper testimony. So if the, if the voting board relied on the testimony given that day, if that testimony was false, then it was misled, and they have, uh, not voted the same way, had they known the fact. So I've provided the facts in here for you, there isn't time to go through all that in my convenience. Um, the, uh, the state of Oregon also requires, and that's why I referred back to that, uh, ordinance you passed about criminal history checks and that, because prior to there, the CEO who signed the confirmation contract with Red Flex, I've got copies of that in here, she had been indicted and an attorney pled guilty to, uh, bribery and other charges related to obtaining contracts with customers, which is the very thing the ordinance, the Oregon ordinance says is not to be known, and that they're not eligible for three years after this. And yet, in a rushed process here, and there's one other thing I'd like to talk about that, and that is that the minutes of that meeting are also inactive. Everything that the lieutenant said, it says the captain said, and everything the cap, or, I'm sorry, the chief said, and everything the chief said, it says the lieutenant said. And, and I don't know if that, uh, if, if the reason that it did not, those minutes took, uh, two and a half months to get approved, I don't know if that's related to that, but the written record, your minutes, is inactive. Now luckily, you still have that YouTube online you can refer to and make those corrections, but if the, I, uh, 'cause the other thing that I put in here was you changed your retention method on some of your stuff from seven years to one year, and, uh, if that were being enforced under YouTube stuff, that evidence of the minutes being wrong would have been lost. So, I think you also need to rethink your retention period on the recording of your meeting.
Okay.
Now let's jump down to the.
So actually, Roger, the time is up, so, um, this is a lot for us to absorb, so, um, and I know you did, um, you put a lot of thought into it, so, um, you know, you know, I greatly appreciate that, how thorough you are in, um, doing your presentation here, so, I think what we'll need to do is just, um, let, you know, we'll take it, absorb it, and then staff will come back and, um, give a report on that.
If I could put like thirty seconds for the, the two being taken.
Mayor, I would like to hear the rest of his discussion on this. You know, we don't, we don't limit people to minutes.
Right.
So I.
Well, we don't, but we do.
I think you're close to giving us the conclusion of your present, presentation, I guess. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Do you have thirty seconds?
Let's hear the rest. Oh, more than thirty seconds.
Well, the only thing he.
We're not the school board, mayor, I wanna hear what he has to say.
Okay, then I think maybe, does all the councilors want to extend it longer then? He was given fifteen minutes for the presentation, we knew where there's no way we would be able to have time to get through all of this this evening.
Mayor, if he could come up with a short conclusion, obviously, I mean, we get, I don't know, what, forty pages, um, we're not going to be able to come up with an intelligent thought process about this tonight, so we're gonna have to look at it, have staff deal with it.
I think you ought to be able to say.
I think it's reasonable to come up with a few, with a few seconds worth of, look at this, look at that, to make sure we get it.
So tell us, okay, what is the suggestion is for a conclusion as to what we ought to be doing with it?
So, yeah, so what was your conclusion?
So the blue, the blue section is, so there's two things, uh, one, I think, and this is based on decades of my tenure, I'm retired, I did that, um, you've got some finger exposure for the way this has been handled, and that's even reflected in the, the extra clause that Red Flex insisted be put in the contract renewal to the extent that you were going to hold them harmless for any misdeeds in using the special provision of contract renewal thing, so that's the first. The second is, just in general, remember that the citizens of Albany, that's a finite budget that those folks have. So every time the city does something that causes money to be spent on fine, that is that amount of money that that average citizen doesn't have to spend in a retail outlet. So just remember, as far as attracting businesses, retaining businesses, that, uh, if you wanna be attracted to, don't compete with your citizens' disposable income, and that's what I see the Red Flex program doing, because it's not increasing safety, the only thing I see that it's done is remove, you know, a hundred grand of disposable income that people who spend all of their paychecks have to spend. So you've taken that out of the pool that they have to take on this, so.
Okay.
Reduce your liability, I think you can, and don't compete with businesses that you wanna drive.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you, Mr. Asai, and, um, and we will let you know when a report comes back to the council on that.
Yeah, I've.
And then, don't forget to take.
I consider that I'm, I'm done with this, this is all in your.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you, and I think, do you need to take your thumb drive out, or?
Yeah, I need your thumb.
Yeah. Okay, um, we still have business from the public, and is there anyone else that wanted to come forward? I think, Gail, you wanted to? Did you, did you wanna?
Are we gonna talk about the gas tax?
Yeah, if he wants to talk about the gas tax, then come up now during business from the public to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is an opportunity if you've got concerns on it.
My name is Gail Borde, B-O-R-D-E, eight thirty-nine Columbus Street, southeast Albany. Um, I don't really know a lot about what you guys are talking about, I'm kind of behind the eight ball on the information, but the way I understand it, you're thinking about proposing to put it up to vote, five cent gas increase, and I want you to realize that I overwhelmingly support you in the fact that our roads are in sad, sad condition. You can't not support your vehicle of, of the method to pay for it. It will put an unfair burden on us, as local dealers, and I have two Chevy stations here in the community. We're already getting enough stress fighting Costco and et cetera, and if you don't think that it'll offend us, and I, I beg to differ with you on that, there's a lot of people that come to buy gas for me that go to Corvallis and go to Lebanon to work, and I, I know they'll start looking. If we start raising our prices, and it's going to affect our, our gallonage and our gallons to go down, our profits to go down. Um, the thing I would like to see us take a look at is, the gas that is sold, is put in these vehicles, is just the energy to provide for that vehicle to go somewhere. They're going shopping, they're going to the bank, they're going to the hospitals, they're going to schools, I know we can't tax the schools on this, but, um, these, I think that it's unfair taxation, and I would like to see us entertain something like Portland is there, where they put on, I don't, I'm not sure the percentage or the rate they use, but they put something on the whole community of the business community, and I think that that's a more fair method to finance this operation. Um, I'm not gonna get into my thoughts on the gross negligence of the city for the last fifty years, this is, this problem didn't start ten years ago or five years ago, it started fifty years ago. I can remember as a child riding my bikes, and the streets were not in that great a shape in the late, early fifties, or late fifties, early sixties, but that's not, I'm not gonna beat that horse up. We need to fix our streets, there's no doubt about it. I just don't think that putting, signaling out a few gas stations is vehicles to pay for it, is gonna help. Costco can absorb the loss, Safeway, Freddy's, they can absorb all those losses, but I can tell you that there's not a lot of us independents, but we will take a hit on this, and, um, like I said, I'd like to see you, I don't know how you do your business, I'll talk to Mike about it, I know Mike very well, I know Bill fairly well, and I know Rich fairly well, that we, you should, some, maybe form some kind of a task force to look at a different vehicle to fund it. Um, like I said, I, does anybody here know what Portland did? I just, I know Portland did something, didn't they?
Portland did a ten cent per gallon gas tax.
Now, they did something for the whole town, though.
Um, I think they have a business tax, we don't, we, I mean, Albany does not.
Have sales business tax.
Yeah, Albany does not have, um, a lot of utility fees that other communities do, like, you know, Lebanon has some, um, Corvallis has some, we've, we have held off on that and really have looked out for the consumer's pocketbook, so we do have, um, the stormwater fee was our first, you know, fee, but we did reduce this, um, you know, the sewer rates to offset it when we implemented that program.
I was under the impression they put some kind of a sales tax on the business community in general. I, I know the ten cent, you know, but.
And we tried to do, kind of, we looked at a business tax years ago, we had a big pushback on that, um, this can has been kicked down the road for the twenty-two years that I've been sitting up here, and, um, we know, we tried to go for gas tax years ago, the room was filled.
Yeah.
And, um, didn't go at that time, so we've had citizens been telling us, we need something done with the streets, it's sort of the most fair way to do a gas tax, the more you use, the more you pay. If we win a street utility fee, every household would pay the same, but usually businesses pay a lot more when it comes to the.
Sure, and everybody that's buying gas is going to the bank or to the grocery store to purchase their supplies in whatever they're doing, and that's my point that I'm trying to get across to you, is, the gas is just the vehicle, the method of the, the, the energy to provide that vehicle to go somewhere to spend money in this community, whether it's giving to the church, I know we're not gonna put a sales tax on the churches or the schools, but going to the grocery store, going to the doctor, going to the hospital, going to the bank, whatever it should be, going to the electrical company, Coburn instructor driving down the street, going to fix, getting, getting, do their service calls, Mike instructor going down the street to provide a service call on somebody's furnace, um, like, to me, it's, I, I just don't think it's fair taxation, and you can, I know that you used to be in the gas business, but, uh, I tell you, it's a rough road out there right now, it's competing with the, the rest of the market, and this is not gonna be a positive outcome for the few independents left in this community, and.
We, we had a citizen.
That's pretty much what I'll, I'd like to take your, I appreciate your time, but I would like you to at least think about what I said, and I will have a further discussion with, I'll probably call Coburn, too, but, um, I know I've talked to Mike and Rich.
Right, I appreciate the thoughts, too, I do know Corvallis is looking at getting the gas tax, too.
You know, if Corvallis and Lebanon do it, I may not say a word, but.
Right.
But I, I still adamantly do not agree with the vehicle of the gasoline being the way to fix our streets, because those vehicles are, they're using the gasoline, yes, but they're going to spend money in our community. There, it's that ability to drive down Pacific or Prunk Street or Water Street or, um, Industrial Way, which is extremely sad, um, and there's an example right there, we've allowed, and just, or the Allied Waste, I think is who's there now, the name of them, and the school buses, to be on a city street that probably wasn't built to, to hold them, and now you're asking the people to buy, spend more money to gas to fix it, I don't, I don't see the deference across the board on that, but anyway, um, I just wanted to share that with you, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
Yeah, a lot of the proposal that the council's been looking at is just having it be designated for residential.
I can't hear you.
Have it be designated for residential streets, so we can be able to do crack ceiling and, you know, getting back, but in other words, we need some.
Well, I guarantee, I'm gonna sit in front of my house and I watch my street every day deteriorate, and there's more potholes out there than there's ever been, and they're getting bigger every day, and we have another, we have a mad freeze situation happening, we've been lucky this winter, we haven't had a lot of the freezing weather, but I think that we, I think we still have some coming, and it's just gonna make more potholes for this community, so, anyway, thanks a lot.
Hey, Gail, I had a, one question, and it's not really related, but why do I see a ten to twelve cent difference in the price per gallon from one end of the town to the other?
Because I don't. Because that's the only way we can survive. Yeah, it's, to put it into perspective with your business, yeah, I know your operations are, I don't know if you're so involved or not, but, you know, you talk to guys running around town with one truck, and you've got 100 trucks running around, and you're going all around the state. I can't compete with Costco. There's just no way. Many a times Costco is selling gas at a dime under what I pay for it.
Wow.
What I pay for it from the state. Now, there's days that it's not that way, but even in those days, our margins, our margins have historically come up a little bit, not to the, I can remember back in the, when your dad had a station, he made 10 cents, 15 cents, he was a lucky man.
I'd say 3 cents.
And we're still doing that. We're still doing that, and we didn't have credit cards in those days. Excuse me. So, you know, that's the other thing you have to take into consideration. The average cost of a gallon of gas is costing us about 6 cents a gallon in credit card fees. So if I sell a gallon of gas for 16 cents profit, and seven or eight cents of it's going to, for their use of the, people don't use gas oil company credit cards anymore. Everybody's using the Visa where they get a mileage plan to go with it. So I can't, that's my only answer to it. I mean, and, you know, I hope I live long enough to find out why in the hell Chevron, because they know they supply them in LA. I positively know that. And they told me bold, right to my face, that they joined into the game with Costco, because they wanted to see how the game was played. They automatically give them 6 cents off rat price. That's part of their contract. So if I'm paying $2 a gallon, is what he explained to me, with all the taxes and the delivery fees, that means Costco's paying $194. And I think there's many a times they're paying a lot less than that. Unless they've just got so much money, they got to give it away. That's the only thing I can come up with, so.
I was just curious.
Okay. Anybody else got any other questions?
No, thank you. I mean, we're just trying to look at, you know, get solutions, and there's only so many options for being able to fund streets, and this was one of them, to bring it to the voters and let them decide. If they vote no, we need some viable solutions, so.
And I agree with you, what you said. I said in my opening comments, I overwhelmingly support the fact that our streets need to be fixed. And yesterday, you know, and we need to find a source, but I just don't think that that's the answer, my personal thing. And I know that Ron Smith feels the same way. I'm kind of surprised he's not here, so, okay. Thanks a lot.
All right, thank you, Gail. Okay, anyone else from Business From the Public? Okay, all right. Seen anyone? Next, council. This is the guest counselor resolution that's been on the agenda a few times. And since we don't have a full council, are you wanting to table this for the next meeting? Oh, yep. Okay, all right. Then, next is waiving the competitive bidding and establishing a contract's specific special procurement for Buckston's economic development tools. And is a staff member wanting to lead on this? Peter or Jorge?
Yes, Mayor. Yeah, we brought this, I believe it was on the 20, well, it was a presentation on the 8th where Buckston provided a presentation to the, or work session. And there was a few questions that came up. We provided some answers during the meeting on the 24th. And council, through motion, provided some guidance to move forward with the contract. One of the things that we discovered as we had our purchasing coordinator review some of this work was that we needed something more formal, like a resolution, and needed to go through the special procurement to go and acquire, do it through a resolution. So we're just bringing it back, basically the same information, but this time we're doing it through a resolution, a special procurement with a resolution to go ahead and contract with Buckston for the economic development tool.
Okay. Council?
Is there anything in here that allows us to measure the success of spending this
There is no metrics right now. We're going to be going through this process, and the intention of this is to, there's a couple things here. One is to retain current business, and the other one is to try to expand and bring new businesses--
I understand that, but I'm wondering, can you tell if they're doing any good?
Well, what I can tell you, Council Olson, is that we went in and talked to other customers, and they all have had good success with these tools, and they are actually continuing to renew the purchase of these tools.
So they just felt good about it? They didn't have any real data?
No, no, they're bringing new businesses. There's actually data for them that they've brought new businesses in.
And Council Wilson, you're also providing the metrics that we're looking for to help measure the success of efforts of other initiatives we have. For example, with the AVA and how effective our tourist, tourism promotion efforts are.
Okay, so there is some method of measuring whether, how much success they've--
Certainly, but in the end, your real measure of success will be if there are empty storefronts, can we fill them? Can we recruit businesses to do that?
Yeah. I'm wondering, is that the result of Cara, or is that the result of the stock market, or is that the result of Buckston?
And that's often hard, causality is very difficult to determine, whether it's because of the efforts of this consultant, or if it's just because of the current market conditions.
But if they bring something, you recognize that they brought it.
Right.
Well, my concern is still some of the same. I tried to pin down their salesman at the last, when he was here previously, and I would think that a company, if they're proud of their product, and they're presenting it to people, they would brag about their successes. I, you know, I couldn't get them to say, this city, X, Y, Z, and State had tremendous success. Here's the successes that they, that we've helped them bring. Here's the people you can call to verify that. I mean, this was like a real slick, slick snake oil, and I'm just, I just, I can't get my head around them doing what they're saying, because I haven't been shown anything other than a nice slick glossy. And we had him right here, he couldn't say, yeah, call these folks, they'll tell you exactly. We did this, 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 and this, rock and roll. They'll really brag about it. I wasn't hearing that. So, I mean, we're talking minimal dollars in the overall scheme of things, but I'm still troubled by it, so.
And are we able to review this at the end of the year or somewhere?
Oh, yeah, we'll get that, we'll get that. But it's still, if we don't like the results, because they had said originally, it's going to take upwards of a year before they can start applying their special tools to make things. It's going to take that long to gather all the information from all the stakeholders in the community, which is, which is fine. But then if we bail out after that first year, then it's still going to cost us a fair percentage of the balance of the contract.
Right.
That's just, that's built into it. So I'm just, it just concerns me, that's all.
I, did they approach the city, or did we reach out to them?
No, we reached out to them. They're a partner with ICMA, the International City Management Association. So they've worked with a lot of cities. And one of the, if you'll recall, one of their, one of the factors here is that they have not, their big thing is to bring in new businesses which bring sales tax. Now, of course, Oregon doesn't have a sales tax, so that's kind of a, that's not an appealing thing for us. But bringing in new businesses just for quality of life is. So they're used to doing business in places that have sales tax, and that's where a lot of their metrics are, but they're trying to expand out into the Northwest, including Oregon.
I'm not necessarily opposed to this. I, I think there's some value there, and you're kind of hoping that after you hear there's value. I think Ray brings up a good point. I mean, all they could point to was in La Grande, they got, it wasn't Jack in the Box, but I mean, they got some small company coming into La Grande.
It's not a very big company.
I'm wondering, is there a possibility to say, you know, our council would feel a little better about approving this if you could give us some more examples like Ray was pointing out?
Yeah, I think he did, he was pointing to a lot of examples. They happen to be in the southeast, and the east, and the south. And if you saw that initial slide he had up, there were quite a few. He's not able, like I said, he's not able to give a lot of examples in Oregon, just because of those factors, the lack of the sales tax and the fact that they're trying to break into--
He said Rochester had like 40, 40 businesses or something like, they brought in like 40, I think it was 40 businesses. Okay, well, give us some names of things that we can verify. It was just, I don't, I just, anyway, I've said my piece.
Jorge, did you have any conversations with other customers of this company that, have you been happy with their service, and was it worth the money?
Yeah, we actually sent a survey with, the normal way we do for any IT tool, and we, all the responses that we got were positive. We actually surveyed five different customers. There's a list of customers they have on the website, and they include, you know, from normal retailers like FedEx and others, and then there's governments, I'm trying to bring up the government ones. There's government, there's cities in Texas, there's cities, and there's about 30 or 40 cities in here that are using their tools today. I can send you the link for that.
And forgive me, I'm sure we covered some of all of this in previous meetings, but tend to forget. Well, I'll make a motion and we approve the resolution.
Second.
And I guess we just need to watch it. And I understand it'll take a while to see what those results are. Kind of almost a leap of faith here, but I think it's worth it to make the effort. I mean, the other option is to do nothing, and--
Well, that's kind of a problem.
A lot of times, people say, well, just let the private sector guide it. Well, I think the private sector can be pushed a little bit, and there are other people that are in a similar line of work in terms of marketing that were at that meeting, that, hey, could we get the debt? There may be some value for local folks to see some of that same information. And we will own the debt, correct?
Right.
And so we can share that with them if we choose, so.
We'll sell it to them. Well, that's, it's my understanding that we pay for it the first year, and when they decide they like it, they chip in in following years. I mean, we have something to say about that.
Well, now we've got our Economic Development Director or staff members, so that we can, a tool for them, and working with the local folks and so forth. So it does open some opportunities, I think, both its doors.
I do remember him having a slide, though, with a lot of logos of businesses. I just can't remember what all was on there, but it was all, a whole slide full of, you know, retailers that they had brought in and worked with.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Motion's been made in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Okay, all right. Motion carried. All right. Okay, council, next is adoption of the consent calendar. You do have a few items on there, so if there isn't any items needing to be pulled off, I'll entertain a motion.
Pull off items three and four.
Three and four, okay. Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of items three and four.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, so Ray, item three, page 40.
Yeah, page three, it's the same issue. There's a resolution as part of the consent calendar, and I'm not sure that we can approve resolutions by a consent calendar without having to read them first and approve them on one--
No, we always do on resolutions, that's ordinances. Ordinances, we have to read them.
If it was an ordinance, we'd have to--
Yeah.
Okay.
It's very, very common that we have a resolution during the consent calendar item.
Good.
Is that okay? And then what's item four?
I'd kind of like to see, I'd kind of like to see these, they'd be separate on the agenda, too, as a matter of fact.
We can do that in the future, yeah. Yeah, something like this, actually, for this type of item would normally, you would think, be a regular item, and not a consent calendar, but--
That's what I, that's what I thought, so, yeah. I think it'd be more transparent, I guess, is the right way to put it, on a regular, regular item.
Yeah, we can do that. And then, would you have a question on item four?
Same thing.
Oh, for the resolution? I see, gotcha.
That was all.
Did you want to make a motion on those two?
Okay, move to approve the items three and four.
Sorry.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, got that done. And next is a ward of bid. So Chris, Backwash Ponds, sounds so exciting.
Excuse me. So this is a project to reshape and reline the backwash ponds at the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant. We are requesting that you reward the contract in the amount of $188,993.60 to DNI Excavating. We got nine bids for this project, actually, and they ranged from the low bid up to a high bid of almost $288,000. So the backwash ponds are located adjacent to the Vine Street Plant down near the river, and they receive the backwash water and solids that come out when we wash the filters. So we push the water backwards through the filters, and it cleans them. And that water contains some sediment and debris, it has to settle out, and then the water is discharged to the river, and that's regulated by a permit issued by DEQ. The ponds also receive backwash material from the AM Water Treatment Plant that we occasionally remove and bring down to these ponds. So the project is to reshape the ponds to restore some capacity that has been lost, and install a new liner, which will minimize leaching or seepage into the adjacent soil. The existing liner is quite old and has been damaged to, through exposure to UV rays, and then as we clean the ponds, sometimes it gets torn or ripped and needs to be replaced. So the work is planned to be phased so that only one pond is offline at any given time, and then we're going to time the work so that it has minimal impact to water production. And that is pretty much all I have, unless you have any questions.
This was kind of encouraging to get that many bids.
Yes, it's very refreshing.
We haven't seen that for a while, so I wonder if maybe things are slowing down, and folks have more time to bid, or--
Doesn't seem like things are slowing down, but we bid it way out in advance of the work window, so maybe that allowed them to schedule their work a little better.
So have we done business with this low bidder before?
We have, according to Stacy. We just completed a water line replacement on Industrial Way, as previously mentioned. Industrial Way's in bad shape, that water line was in bad shape. And DNI was the general contractor for that project, which went as according to plan.
So that was it, then? Nothing to this--
That's all that I have from Stacy.
Nothing to this magnitude, then, for a project?
Ooh, this--
I mean, it was so close to Pacific Excavation. I mean, it's just really close bid that, and yet we've had, you know, many projects with them, so.
No, I don't think there's any concern with this.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, move to ward of bid to DNI Excavating Silverton for the mine backwash pond improvement.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Next is the audit report. So Gina?
That's what I think Ray was going to say.
Ray, you gonna give the report? Okay.
Basically, it's preempted by this wonderful little report that was written by you, that we have here on the desk. The annual budget report was another glowing report that the city has earned over the years. A couple of very, very minor, minor things that were found that had already been corrected by the time the report came through. So he, the auditor said again that Albany's in the very high, high-end percentage of communities across the state with the transparency and how the audits come out, which is refreshing. Nothing to warrant saying, only one thing that's missing on the report is that, because I'm not going to be here next year, we voted to have Bessie take my place as the vice chair.
Yeah.
And she's not here to get the accolades for doing so.
Yeah.
Welcomed Gina, and said goodbye to Stuart. Another good report. Expect the same thing next year, too. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, all right. And the counselors did get a copy of the audit, didn't they? All of them, yeah. Okay, great, thank you, Ray. Thank you, Gina. Next, Marilyn, you've got code enforcement report.
I'm just the window dressing, the--
Okay. Looks like you have a lot on the list this time.
Can we get pictures? Cool.
Do I need this?
Yeah.
Where are we putting this in? The other computer one? Top one?
Strange how you ask the oldest guy.
I'm younger than you, I think my memory's...
You're older? No, you're old. You're ancient. Well, you're not, you're not nine squared yet. Or three to the fourth.
What did you say?
We're just making fun of how old people are. And you're the oldest one here, yeah. And you're, you're, you're three to the fourth power, so...
As I have told people, I'm twenty-two, I'm probably the youngest person on the council. I'm still the youngest person.
TV's turned on. Eighty-one to the first.
It's about the oldest.
While we get the technical stuff going, I'm a little old school like I'm used to.
How old is Ralph?
It's been a year, it's been a year since Chris has been in this position and we continue to get things done. We've got some updates on cases that we have listed here, things change pretty fast sometimes. So...
Marilyn, can you pull your mic closer?
Oh, okay. I'm not used to that.
Okay, that better?
Not much.
That better?
There you go.
Okay, here we go. We're continuing to do a lot of work in the Cara district as the funding requires and actually that's where a lot of our cases are anyway, but making good progress there. A lot of our cases are very complicated and require the full attention of everybody on the team. We have a new team member in the first six months of this year, David Gilby from Public Works who is working on environmental stuff related to stormwater compliance and others. Correct, Chris?
I'm totally not paying attention, I'm sorry, what?
David Gilby's position?
Oh, yeah, Environmental Services Manager, so he does industrial pretreatment, spills, stormwater, a bunch of that.
Things that leak and ooze and, sorry, that's part of the drill. Chris, you want to report on...
Yeah, I do have photos for the first one, but they come up, we'll get there. So the signs of green or old signs of victory buildings on Fourth and Calipia that were in the news, we forwarded them up for the conditions. I was going to show you some of those photos if they do come up. They recently haven't changed on the tax listing, but...
They haven't?
Well, they sold, but I haven't just seen it on the tax in July, wait to confirm that through the tax records. But Marilyn says it, I am going to guarantee it's true.
George Mannell told me that yesterday.
Okay. So that's good. In his plan, he went to a pre-plan approval with the building departments and was trying to decide what's the best course of action, tearing them down or remodeling. My opinion after being in that, I'm just tearing them down because there's waterfalls inside when it rains, so black mold throughout. We'll see what happens there.
So you're thinking that he's proposing to tear them down?
No, that's his proposal, is to, he wants to find out what's the best course of action. He believes it's tearing down, but then the historical board has been saying that as well.
Oh, yeah.
And who is it that's doing that?
This, what's his name?
Mark Signer.
Okay, now I heard you talking about him and I thought, oh no.
No, no, no. He sold them.
He's out of it?
Yeah, totally, they, yeah, he totally closed on it last week.
Yeah. Last time I was in the middle one, which is two, or five thirty-three, four, I believe is what it is, when it was raining, it was just waterfalls down the middle ceilings and the buildings are all just erect. But it'd be great to have some new properties and buildings there to make the area a lot nicer. And he did clean up all the trash, which he had outstanding compliance issues with, junk and trash around the property, he did clean that before it was sold. Well, they did as well.
Well, I know this is beside the point, but did he say whether he was talking about residential or I think, I think the zone is appropriate there to have businesses?
I don't know, a neighbor called me and stated that he had believed Signer told him it was going to be businesses, but I don't know.
Okay, I'd heard that too, yeah. I'd like to see it be residential.
Yeah, that'd be a question for him. Jefferson Court, which the city paid to demolish a long time ago, or I guess that's a subjective word, a while ago, they weren't taking any action, the bank actually gave that property back to the owners because of the lack of value in a vacant lot. They were unwilling to do anything with the property, so the city has foreclosed based on their outstanding lien on the property for demolition of the property. So if we do get that, we'll have a chunk of property there next to Sunrise Park, which we'll have access to do things for, which are still under term.
I can give you a quick update on that, too. So like I said, we filed the foreclosure, we got a default judgment against the two owners and then everything now, the last document was sent yesterday to the court, which is a general judgment. Once that's signed by the judge, it was accepted yesterday, once we get that signed copy back, they will, the court will then put the property up for sale and if there's no bids on it, then the city will then become the proud owners of that property and we can do it. Let's see if it, yep.
Let's see what other highlights we have.
Mentioned three thirty, Marilyn.
Yeah, three thirty, Marilyn, we had quite a bit of issues there with vegetation and I do have some photos of that property as well. Neighbors were calling in of trees collapsing, people squatting, trash piling up because people were just dumping trash in the back of the property and the doors had been kicked in. We paid work crew to go out there, Lynn County Work Crew to go out there and clear out the vegetation and part of a tree that had fallen on the fence of a neighbor and that money was reimbursed by the county to us, so that that's all squared up, the property's looking good and the neighbors are all happy. That is supposed to go completely over to the county this year, I believe it was in September, so that they'll...
The Maryland, that's the Maryland street?
Yes.
Yeah. They accelerated it.
Oh, did they? Yeah, I haven't looked at it since we cleaned it up.
They were complaining while they were accelerating because, well, they're going to spend seventy thousand dollars, something like that, paying the state, but...
Yeah, at the end of the other street they had one too that they transferred over at the last year and that one got completely cleaned up as soon as they took possession of it, which was nice. Twenty-four forty Queen has been a vacant property for a while, we've had a lot of break-in and entry there, or trespassing, and a lot of squatters in the back of the property. That property was actually demolished end of last year and it's just finishing up the demo right now and her plan is to sell that and whatever the developers want to do with it, it's a pretty big lot, I believe it's an acre and a half lot off the Queen. The photos tell us so much more. Another highlight, too, is on twenty-one nineteen Crocker, which I reported on the last time we had this meeting. We had done a big cleanup there, I think it was the sum of about forty-five hundred or four thousand dollars. It was, I'm trying to think how many tons it was. How many yards of trash was that? Four, a hundred and ten yards of trash I think we pulled out of that property when we cleaned it up for Crocker.
Yeah.
We put the lien on that property, that property actually was remodeled and recently sold, so we recovered all that money and the new owners are currently moving in. I live up there, so I see them moving every, every day. Yeah.
We also had a property that I don't remember if it's on this, it's not on this list, another property that we had that was, a hoarder had lived there, the property was incredibly overgrown, couldn't even see the house from the street. We hired a crew to clean that because the neighbors were complaining about it and that was over...
Twenty-two, twenty-three lot, yeah.
Yes, that was over four thousand dollars and we recently were paid for that as well. We've had, had a really good success rate with getting our liens paid quickly by banks.
Well, that's good. So I see the Grand Prairie Road one is looking like there's going to be some movement.
Oh, yeah, so the Grand Prairie one, they started cleaning it up. I just found the person who held the title to the RV, he lives off the same one, he's going to go remove that RV for them and her hope is, I think it was by the end of summer, to have that current mobile unit on there demolished and then start rebuilding an actual stick structure into some property.
Good.
Looks like we need a computer guy.
No, we need to not be doing this, actually.
Fiddling, I don't see it on here, but do you have any information on seven three two fourth?
Of course not.
I've asked you...
Not much, I just went by there, the banks replaced all the locks on it. They had a concern when they first called me that the city building department had condemned that building, therefore they couldn't go into it. I had to explain to them that that wasn't the case, that it wasn't habitable, but they were more than welcome to go there and repair the building and then sell it, but they couldn't sell it in its current condition. I don't have all the details on why that was the case, I believe it was plumbing. But they have gone in there, they put in proper, proper boarding to where it's not going to be ripped off like they were being and are taking some action.
So can we start fighting them because they aren't doing anything with it?
Okay, so they get fined, they get two hundred fifty dollars a month fine currently, they're in that derelict structure phase.
And double that if they don't?
After six months, it goes to five hundred and then it goes to seven fifty and then it goes to a thousand. So the more time they waste, the faster it goes.
Those are six-month increments?
Correct.
That takes years to get up to a significant amount.
It does.
Particularly a bank, you know.
I've never actually had anyone get out of the two hundred fifty mark. They always take care of it before that.
That'll bring it to their attention, two hundred fifty.
Yeah, and pretty much as soon as they start seeing a loss of money, they either take action or transfer banks.
Well, I know my neighbors back here, that's right, their neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah, I had one that was close to getting out of that two fifty, but as soon as it got to that last month, it was dealt with, which was nice.
Well, great, that's encouraging, I appreciate it.
So this is the signs of victory houses. These are older photos, the one in the top left, these are from when we first took the report. So all the top photos are black mold, the one that's on the top left is where the waterfall's now coming and there is no more wallpaper on the ceiling, it's just black mold and a waterfall.
Those are the fourth street?
Yeah, they're various. The pictures are from all three houses. The one in the bottom center was from the basement of the five thirty-three, which they had, three people living in the basement?
Under the stairs.
Yeah, one was underneath the staircase on the porch and since there's no actual power supply but two outlets, they ran extensions like this and just put boxes in random places. It was a huge fire hazard and none of the bedrooms actually had windows out. And then none of the buildings had heating, so they all ran heaters next to beds, some were piled under clothing and such like that, which is why it led to the closure and board of both those properties. Forty-three, oh, we haven't talked about this one yet, forty-three fifty-seven Columbus been vacant for quite a while.
Five or six years.
Yeah. Calls of rat issues, people trespassing, we've had numerous break-ins there, people squatting.
Just a few blocks from South Albany High School, so it was attractive nuisance for us.
Yeah, so, and the roof had been damaged where you could see kind of on the middle right top, that's on the outside and now inside's the boat there, you could see out into the light that the rain damage is actually growing a mushroom field inside the door.
So was it a foreclosure?
It was a foreclosure. And so the bank, after we contacted them, sold it to another bank, the lien or their debt, and that bank came in and cleaned up all the vegetation, repaired the whole roof and it's up for sale now. I don't know if it's actually sold yet.
Yeah.
But the picture on after, that's how it currently stands, they have proper maintenance there to maintain it whilst getting ready to be sold. It's actually the same company that sold the twenty-one nineteen Crocker house, so they've been coming through quite heavily and buying up a lot of foreclosures, remodeling them, repairing them and selling them. This is the Maryland Street House. So the top two are just the vegetation, the one on the top left is actually from the front of the house where I took the after photo, you just can't really see it. And then the back's where the trash is being dumped and that's where the door was kicked in to get inside. All that was cleaned up and that's currently how it sits. This is the Crocker House, this is the one that we pulled the hundred and ten yards of trash off of and ended up boarding up, I think while they're pulling out the hundred and ten yards of trash, they killed, I think like forty-five rats underneath the spot that's on the bottom middle left photo. And then, so that company that sold this also, I told them that the house next door was vacant and was able to get them the owner information and they bought that house as well and repaired it and that one's up for sale, too. So hopefully that one will be sold soon as well. That one had a huge tree fall on top of its roof, so they took all that tree out, repaired it and put that up for sale.
So is that in North Albany?
That is in North Albany. I didn't want to run into too many photos. If you have any questions on any of the other ones on there?
No.
It's kind of an ongoing process with most houses.
Great job, Chris, really, really been able to get a lot of good results.
Yeah, it's just pressuring banks and, I mean, Marilyn and Holly and all them really helped me out on everything I do.
Yeah, particularly lighting a fire with the darned banks and getting the foreclosed houses back into circulation because they really blight the neighborhood when they sit there unoccupied with the grass growing up and everything going to heck.
Yeah, it's an ongoing process, I think I have like twenty houses right now, but I just have to catch up on some stuff.
Thank you.
Another one that I would, I'd like to point out is twenty-four forty Queen Avenue Southeast. That place had been empty for years and years and years and was, it's one of those long deep lots on the east end of Queen, there's just lots of, it's huge and the house was at the front and the rest of it was grass that was, was mine. After finally getting it boarded up a couple of years ago because it was being invaded all the time, the owners finally, finally decided to demolish it and it's gone, there's nothing there now, but the foundation is being rebuilt.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so that, that was a terrible, the neighborhood dumping ground for discarded furniture and after shopping carts, those have kind of moved next door to the apartment complex and migrate out into the street and we have to take care of that for time to find it. But that house is gone, it's not a problem anymore.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Sure. With everything that you're finding all over around the area and stuff, any, getting any hints as to possibly where the big pickup might be this year?
Thank you for asking that, we don't have, I don't have an answer for that. We, the original goal of that project, that program was to make it something that neighborhoods would take on, on their own and they would do the work themselves, we would assist them. It has not worked out that way. It has fallen on staff primarily, the organizing, the work, picking projects, providing tools and all that, and we have run out of staff to do that. We are hoping that we can get a neighborhood interested this year and we'd be happy to help, but we can't do everything like we have done.
Yeah, it used to be more when it first started, it was great, we got a lot of, you know, local organizations and neighborhoods to really come out and work well, but I've noticed the last couple of years it, it has diminished and, and the volunteers coming out and it is a big, big load on staff, too, so...
We had really good success the first two years, especially the Hackelman neighborhood and then the Willamette neighborhood. Not, we would have had no success in the Sunrise neighborhood if we hadn't had, that hadn't coincided with the Willamette celebration that year, we had three hundred church members just go through that, that neighborhood like a mower and cleared out a whole bunch of problem properties, but it's, it has taken a dive since then and we've been struggling with it.
Much too bad, I look forward to that one day, it's fun.
It is fun, it is fun, yeah.
Yeah.
Three people are watching and getting an idea.
Right. But there's still always the Willamette River kind of cleanup, so maybe it can just be something coincided or promote their event for cleaning up the Willamette River, so, and where they, you know, go and trim and get rid of the ivy and stuff like that around the river, but, yeah, so...
That's what it is happening.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
So I had one question, I just looked at seven of these properties that are still open that's... But there's still always the Willamette River kind of cleanup, so maybe it can just be something coincided or promote their event for cleaning up the Willamette River. So, and where they, you know, go and trim and get rid of the ivy and stuff like that around the river, but, yeah.
That's what it is happening.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
I had one question. I just looked at seven of these properties that are still open that specifically mentioned junk and trash and you were talking about the rats out there in North Albany. Is, can that junk and trash lead to a rat problem? Have you seen that?
Anyone's in it?
Yeah. Yeah.
I think derelict houses really contribute, don't they?
They can.
Yeah, we had one house on, it's not on this list, and it got taken care of really quickly off of Queen, just off of Marion, that when you knock on the walls, like five rats ran out of the walls. It was crazy. And we, DHS got involved and a bunch of other groups got involved. The family got removed. The owner found out about it, which they were kind of an absent owner just collecting the rent. But as soon as they found out about it, it got, the whole house got remodeled, got a new roof, got new siding, got new everything. And I think they're putting it up for sale soon. I think they want to stay in the renting game.
Yeah. And then I think Salem just did an article about rats.
So the Oregonian, the rest regarding the Aginans, they're everywhere.
Yeah.
They're everywhere.
Must be tis the season.
Well, it's, it's sort of cyclical, like possums and nutrients. They come and they go.
Yeah.
But some places, they blame the rats on the presence of backyard chickens. That's, there is a direct correlation there. If you give them something to eat, someplace to sleep and something to do, then you've got roommates.
Bird Peters, too.
Yeah, bird Peters.
Huge draws, which a lot of people like the bird Peters because they like the birds.
Pet food, outdoor pet food.
Gardens.
Yeah.
Compost.
Yeah, compost piles, yeah. Okay, yep, Mike?
Are the rat problem that you've probably seen the emails going back and forth from different people?
I've had about 50.
Yeah, I know. How are we doing on that? Are, I know that-
Currently, the only code that we have to address a rat issue is infestation, which is under Title 18. And it's a weak code. I'd love to bring it to better light. It says you should not harbor an infestation or not shall. So it's really minimal what I could do if I could even find infestation at the beginning, but then I have to line up multiple other violations of that code before I could do anything for it because I have to fall back to another section that states you cannot have multiple things within this, which doesn't designate one or two, though I've been going off of two in hopes that that's enough. It just says multiple. But that's really all I have is you shouldn't have an infestation.
So are we addressing that in?
If I define infestation, so currently-
We haven't found anything yet.
No. So currently of the people that have been emailing me in the district that you're specifically talking about, I have a map on my desk that anytime somebody emails me, I'm mapping out kind of where the chunks are coming from and then going around there and trying to find what could possibly be leading to that problem, but I haven't found anything.
Okay.
They also have, I mean, if you keep going, what would be east, you have tons of just open field, water, grasses, and places where they could find tons of shelter during the day and then move in during the night, back and forth. And that could just possibly be it as well, a good habitat for them, but it could be an infestation I just haven't located.
Okay, thank you.
Not for last try.
Yeah.
I need an answer, wait and answer everybody that's absolutely sideways on this issue, so.
Yeah, and I try to give them the best answers I can, but unfortunately, there's just no solution for-
Right. When that kind of hit Facebook, it ended up being just all across town, but it's everywhere, just like Salem, Portland. And even that weekend, my husband finds a dead one in our backyard, so some neighborhood cat must have got to it. But, but no, I mean, it's just, it could be anywhere.
Time to get a rat terrier for a dog.
And I don't have any bird seed or pet food or anything out there, but when you don't have a dog in the backyard, I get all the, all the little varmints will come, come in my yard and, and I get raccoons all the time and possum and, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Oh, I got 280 nutrients.
Cats to adopt.
Yeah, yeah, I know. So cats will, cats will get to them, so, yeah. Okay.
I'll let you know if I find anything else.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Chris, I just wanted to say thanks to you. You've done a great job since you've been here. It's been really good working with you and I remember when we didn't have a, a person in your position, how difficult it was to deal with this. And now having you here, it's been really, really nice, so.
You've eased up Marilyn's load, too. It was put so much on her also.
We spend a lot of time together.
Yeah.
Let's not start spreading rumors.
Some good results, so, thank you.
Thanks for not the rest.
Okay, okay, counsel. Well, we have a carryover from on Monday and that would be the gas tax proposal. And staff did email out the summary ballot question and then also they have handed out a revised version. So do you have the original, the one that was emailed out yesterday plus today's, which do you have? Do you have both of them in front of you? Okay, so I think probably what would be easier for us is to sort of kind of, to expedite this basically, would be to just go through the each section and then, you know, get consensus on each section to see if the text to it is going to be acceptable.
Probably just start with the last, the last revision that we got.
I would, I would suggest we start with the second, the one that's on the dais tonight because staff has-
Yeah, that's the last.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah. So on the first part would be the, did you have any questions over the resolution section before we get to caption? Caption's in the, in the middle, which is basically your ballot title. So is there anything in the, go ahead and read through.
In the whereas clauses.
Yeah.
Well, we keep calling this a gas tax, only it says fuel tax, which means gas, diesel, propane for, is that, is that the intent?
Motor vehicle fuel tax.
Does it include natural gas vehicles?
What is state law on that for fuel tax?
Natural gas, I, natural gas vehicles I don't know.
You can, there are examples of municipal fuel taxes that cover various things. Some of them cover, don't cover over the road diesel sales. Some of them only specifically cover over the road diesel. So you can, I think, tailor it for what you want.
Well, since it says-
But it's generic. We left it as generic.
Well, since it says vehicle fuel tax, then whatever you're using for fuel, that gets taxed then.
Well, so, I don't know. You have to educate me on how a, a natural gas vehicle is fueled. I don't-
It's LNG, liquid natural gas.
So, I mean-
And they're converting a lot of them in, at LBCC to LNG and liquid propane.
Okay. So you can't, I mean, I'm going to ask a dumb question, but you can't fill it then. You can't go get a tank and fill that tank and then bring that tank to your house and fill your car, or can you do that?
Sure.
Because that wouldn't be taxed because they're not, they're not going to ask you-
Pressure. It depends whether it's high pressure, low pressure.
Okay. I would imagine if, if you bring your car to a station somewhere, be it a natural gas or fuel, gasoline, diesel, then the tax would apply. If you're getting a tank filled somewhere like at a Lowe's or something, they're not going to ask you, what are you using it for? And then tax you based on what you responded. So it would be most like, most of this is going to be gasoline and diesel. And we, as Chris said, we can split that up into either or, or both. Monday night was kind of bring back a, a resolution, but it wasn't any specifics in that. So we made it as general as possible so that the council could decide how they wanted to go with it.
Well, if it's only gas, then the thing to do for people with large fleets is to have them all converted to LNG or liquid propane. Then they escape the tax.
This, in the League of Oregon Cities, they have a publication that talks about local, local fuel taxes. And they define motor vehicle fuel as gasoline, diesel, mogas, which I think is a low lead. I'm not sure what it is. And methanol. Let me see what mogas is. Motor gasoline. So it might be a leaded gas or something like that, or a racing fuel or something like that. So it's gasoline, diesel, mogas and methanol are the fuels that are commonly referred to as motor vehicle fuel. And if we need to, we can specify within the, either the resolution or the explanatory statement. Somewhere in there, I think we can specify the fuels that we would be, the council would be interested in.
Well, because you can get co-energy if you convert it to LNG, LPG. You just drive to co-energy and have your tank filled up and away you go. And there's a lot of vehicles that are doing that. A lot of companies are doing that now because it's more efficient, it burns cleaner, you get more miles per gallon. We're not even addressing that in this resolution then.
Do the feds and the state demand a tax on that?
Beg your pardon?
Do the feds and the state demand a tax on the gas?
That I don't know, but if we're going to tax somebody on motor fuel and that's being used as a motor fuel and it's not, it's only addressed as gas.
Right. So, so what we can do to kind of, you know, come through the, the text that we have, your staff can start looking up, see what state law. Would you be able to do that? Jorge, look up state law to see what they identify as motor vehicle?
So isn't this action we got tonight essentially asking the voters, do you want a tax on motor fuel?
Right.
And when they say no, we don't have to worry about. If they say yes, then we go through all the rigmarole of just exactly what is a motor fuel and may as well.
I, I think you probably need to maybe identify it ahead of time.
You'd want to identify it. If you don't identify it, well, off the highway. Right now, if you go into, you go into Chevron and you have a tractor and a farm truck, farm truck that stays off the highway, you can use off the highway or red, red diesel. You're going to put tax on that? I mean, that's- That's why they put the red diesel out there because there were so many farmers using the diesel that was non-tax for roads in their road vehicles. Yeah. I mean, farmers, loggers, I mean, anybody that, you know, it's, it's a chunk of change.
Marilyn, are you looking it up too, trying to look to find out what state law identifies?
I'm trying to take notes.
Oh, you want?
Jorge's much better than I am anyway.
Jorge's finding anything?
I'm trying to find.
Well, I think the best thing to do on that is, we won't, for the sake of saving you an extra meeting, not to put it in the resolution, but to include in the ballot title because the, the voters are going to be looking at the ballot title and the explanatory statement, not the resolution that we're passing tonight. So we can make modifications to that ballot title between now and, and the middle of next week. And we can include, if, if the council desires to include natural gas and the like, we can look that stuff up and put that into the ballot title. We are capped at the amount of words we put in the summary at 175. Purposely, I can only say specifically, but I purposely left a lot of wiggle room so that we could add stuff in. I think we're at around 55 to 60 words at the moment. I can add 100 more words or, to this, to add in stuff because I figured we probably would have some other language we wanted to include in it, so.
Under the summary.
Under the summary, that's correct.
But you can't add the question in cap.
The question, the caption's capped at 10 words or less and the question is capped at 20 words or less. So we're, yeah, it gets kind of tricky when you're playing with 10 words, so.
So then the other question that comes to mind is what about electric vehicles?
They luck out, I think.
Huh?
They luck out.
That's all, that's all.
That's just the way it is. So everybody goes to electric vehicles, then what do you do?
It'll be great.
Then you have less tax revenue.
Yippee.
Charge, charge a higher franchise fee or electricity.
So let's get nuclear reactors and do it.
But you know what? The state will be dealing with that anyway and federal over gas tax revenues. If you eventually have gasoline go away, well, then there won't be a tax. So, but that's, that's the future to have to cross that road when that happens.
So the state, the terms like if natural gas and propane, especially use fuel registration
that allows you to pay an annual fee instead of per gallon tax. So they, they charge it on the registration for natural gas and propane fleets.
Oh, okay.
So we'd miss out on that by a cent on the, on the fleets that are using propane or natural gas.
Yeah. You won't reach it on all, but that's currently how things are now, so.
So, but everything's about being fair and equitable to everybody, so.
You do the best you can.
It's about, yeah, it's like about the best, but, but give us a solution. Give us a solution. Yeah. So, yeah, Ray?
On, on the summary pay, on the summary section.
Well, is Eric, first of all, on the resolution section, everyone okay before we get to the caption?
Oh, okay.
Is everyone okay with that part?
On which?
On the first half of the page before you get to caption.
So the whereas clauses and now therefore?
Yeah.
Is there, everything look okay on that part?
Okay.
Okay. Then how about the caption? Is everyone okay with the caption, motor vehicle fuel tax?
Yep.
Looks okay to me.
That look okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And then how about the question? Should Albany impose a five cent per gallon motor fuel, motor vehicle fuel tax for street maintenance and repair?
Does that imply that it's, that that's going to be the sole funding source for street maintenance and repair? Should it possibly say limited street maintenance and repair?
Well, I think we can get that in the summary, maybe on it. So the question-
We're still with the limited number of words that were allowed in that.
Right, right.
Yeah, never mind. Okay, that could come down in the summary then.
We can only do 20. There's one, two, three, four, five, six. There's 16, so see, there's not much we can do with that.
Okay, gotcha.
All right. Is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And then summary.
Okay, two things. One, one, just some, there's a spacing issue in the third line. It says, "Come city." Should be a space between "Come" and "City."
Between "Come" and "City," yep.
Okay. And then, this is probably a little anal on my part, but I harp on the commas. That's called, it's, I think there should be a comma after reconstruction on that third line. Otherwise, there's, you know, companies that have gotten nailed on a legal standpoint because of missing those commas. Most recently, Dairy in Maine got, lost a court suit for $5 million because it didn't have the comma in the prop, it was missing it. It's called an Oxford comma. But that's a whole different issue. I would recommend putting the comma back in there. But where it says would provide funding for preservation, I'm, my, I'm inferring that that implies that that's going to be the sole source of funding for street repair. And I'm thinking that it should just say, just say limited preservation of city streets. This is my-
I don't read it that way. I read it that the, that the tax would only be used for those things, not that that's the only source of funding for those things.
Okay.
Right. I mean, I still say we should have something in there about residential neighborhoods to really make it look like this is going to be some funding for residential neighborhoods.
I agree.
And, which it could be under the proceeds could only be used for street maintenance and repair of streets, takeout and related required improvements and just put in residential neighborhoods only.
Chris?
And I know Chris has concerns on it, but if you think about the amount of funding we have out of this, it's only, you know, one and a quarter million. Easily, it would take years for you to run out of residential streets to be able to do crack ceiling improvements to.
But that-
Chris's concern was future councils. It would bind a future council.
But it does, it does also include arterials and collectors in those residential streets.
In those neighborhoods.
In those neighborhood streets.
Well, if you, so my only concern, my primary concern is if the ordinance that's voted on is, is strict about the use of the funds and 10 years from now or 15 years from now, the council decides to do something different, has a different priority for those funds, are we bound? Are we stuck?
You'd have-
So could the ordinance be generic enough and still there be a council policy and direction? So the policy and direction now could be residential streets, but that policy and direction may change, you know, at some future time. I just, what I would not want to do is have to go out and modify the gas tax ordinance, assuming it passes, because, simply because the priority of where to spend the funds has changed. That, that was my primary concern.
Well, I guess my concern is that right now, we're spending probably 95% of our street funding on the arterials and collectors because that's a huge priority and we're only able to maintain those at the 60% PCI. Nothing's going to residential and if we don't try and earmark something for residential in and of itself, that money that's going to be coming in is going to be, to queue in again on arterials and collectors and we still bypass the residential. That's my concern.
No, I understand.
Great.
Is the purpose of having this for residential and collectors, is that the political purpose of maybe we can get some more people to vote for it? Or is it so that- Is the purpose of having this for residential and collectors, is that the political purpose of, maybe we can get some more people to vote for it? Or is it so that there is money to do the work? I think it's a little short-sighted to do it for the political purpose. I mean, I can envision something down the road, because this is not going to get the job done. So what happens down the road when we say, you know, we need to have a bond issued? To, I mean, we don't have the information coming back yet from the public saying, these are the important things to us. We have a little bit of an inkling, but we don't have that information.
But on the street section, Jorge said it was more positive than what we thought, yeah?
They didn't think as much. But the bottom line is, what happens in a year, two years, or six months, whatever it is, if we decide, you know, the only way to fix this, and we have people who are coming together to say it needs fixed, and they will vote for a bond, if they vote for a bond, it's stuck. The only place you can use it is, and it comes in, when it comes in, it limits your ability to be flexible when the time comes to do work. And unless there is an overriding need to have it in there, I'd say don't put it in there.
You hit the nail on the head when there's not enough money. And my understanding is, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, that all along, this has been thought of as just as a one prong out of a multiple funding process, because there's no way any one of them is going to cover everything that we need. We're going to have to do several of these things, but we keep kicking the can down the road. This at least gets a toehold, so.
Yeah, Bill?
Getting back to what Chris was talking about, I'd like to see the money in a separate account that's just for this specific purpose. And I think back to Jeff Blaine's presentation, where he pointed out three separate funding sources for street maintenance that have been diverted into other areas. And I don't want to see that happen with this money.
Well, I mean, by law, gas tax money can only be spent on, it's later in here, you know, construction and maintenance activity related to streets. So it's not going to go pay for the library or something like that. So by law, the gas tax money, and the state gas tax money we receive now goes into the street maintenance fund, because it has the same limitations. So, you know, we certainly can create another revenue bucket that's specifically the local gas tax money, and it would live in the street fund and be paid for that. And I appreciate your concern that somebody doesn't come in and take street money away. But this is a little bit different than like, you know, franchise fees or those sorts of things. This has a constitutional, state constitutional requirement to be used for street projects, so maybe not as much of a risk there.
And I think, you know, it would be best to keep it in a separate fund. I think we need to be able to show the public too, at least to be able to, you know, watch it for five years and show some measurable outcomes. You know, to really be able to show what we accomplished out of that, out of that fund, and for what projects. Because then, you know, Councilor Sykes was saying, you know, earlier, maybe this should be more. Maybe we should be charging 10 cents or 50 cents, and, but this way, if we have to maybe in a few years increase it, ask the voters to increase it, we need to show some measurable outcomes for it. And I think this sort of kind of, sort of sets that foundation, to be able to see and to really show the public that we were really looking out for these funds.
And I think Gina can jump in if there's anything wrong with that, but I don't think that there's a problem putting it into a separate revenue fund.
Yeah, okay, that'd be good. Yeah, Mike, and then Ray?
Again, I like Ray's, Rich's idea of a bond, and get it fixed. That's what, that's what I'm trying to say. It's going to produce $1.2 million a year, and we have a $25 million deficit on the street maintenance to get our PCI up to 60%. So, we're shooting BBs at an elephant.
Well, and then that's...
To go through this process.
Right.
And that's what I was trying to say, Mayor.
Yeah, so that sort of leads to where this should be designated for residential. Because when we went out for the bond before, 20 years ago, and that was designated for, it was for collector and major collector streets, because we knew citizens aren't going to want to be paying for a bond that if it's not going to be anything that's going to benefit in their neighborhood, or they're, you know, that they, you know, drive on each day. So, you know, $1.25 million out of 200 miles of residential streets can easily, you know, be spent. It would take, none of us in our lifetime will see, probably when we run out of projects for residential streets, to be able to, in neighborhoods, to be able to, you know, not have any money to spend it on, so. But this would be a good, kind of a segue into, this is residential, then in the future, we'll look at for a bond on that. But that's going to be a harder sale, I think, a bond, than it would be gas tax too.
Well, I think a key issue is to be able to come up with a demonstration area project or something like that, that can show some relatively quick results and say, hey, you voted this gas tax in, here's the results, and it's happening relatively quickly, as quickly as government can make things happen. So it doesn't drag out another five years, and we haven't done a single street yet. It's just sitting in an account, waiting for, you know, large enough money. So, even if it's some streets that aren't, that are in just okay condition, and we can just do a slurry seal on top of them to help maintain that, knowing full well, full reconstruction is mind-bogglingly expensive. But at least, you know, get something started relatively quickly, because it shows that we're trying to do something to benefit the community. I think something's got to be done for some of the neighborhood streets, so.
Given the fact that some people live on streets they just paid for? I mean, anybody that's in a, in a house that's less than 10 years old, lives on a street that's pretty nice, why would that person want to vote for this?
Because they might have to drive on...
Well, I mean, if you're talking about residential streets, I mean, going back to the reason you do it, the reason you do it is get people to vote for it, and then to guarantee it. Well, I understand guarantee it. But you want to get people to vote for it, it needs to be, you know, their ox is being gored, but they're not seeing the benefits in front of their place.
But if it says residential neighborhoods, that could end up being, Hill Street is in a residential neighborhood. Elm Street's a residential neighborhood. You know, many streets throughout the whole community, arterials are residential neighborhoods. So it's not totally, you could still, you have that flexibility by having residential neighborhoods.
Even Fifth Street.
Yeah.
I have another thing in the summary when we're ready for it.
So, that's what we're at, right now, the summary.
Okay.
Yeah.
There is fuel sold within the city. Now, we have some wholesalers. So we talk in wholesale too? Because you're talking about people who buy fuel, who live someplace else, work someplace else. I mean, Carson is sitting there with hundreds of thousands of gallons of fuel. They sell it in, they sell it wholesale to companies in SIO. You know, are we going to, is it going to be just retail? Or is it also going to be wholesale?
If that's directed at me, that's completely council's decision. I mean, it's, as of now, it'll be everything, but if you want to limit it to gas stations...
I presume it's just retail.
Well, but that isn't what it says.
Right.
Right, and most of, the tax anyway is going to go to the state. The state is the one that's going to be, you know, distributing it. Because it's all paid for, you know, at that state level. Yeah, then that will be giving our portion.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Wouldn't they be implementing it?
Yeah, that's generally, I mean, I think you can attempt to do it a different way, but I think everybody pretty much has it go to the state, and then the state distributes it, sends you back your portion.
But it doesn't change the 5%, though. We send, we say it's 5%, the 5% goes to the state, and the state gives us 5%.
Five cents.
Right, five cents. Well, given that, we would then be taxing a business that's a farm, or a, you know, that comes in and gets fuel. And if that is either reasonable or it isn't, I don't think it's reasonable.
Would...
That's sort of another fine point we need to look at in that, how it's structured, and what the definition of sales within the city is, so I'll look at, I'll try to see if I can...
We could change it to retail sales.
I mean, there's other cities that we can easily find out how it's done too, you know, that have local fuel tanks.
Well, it seems to me with all these questions, we're moving a little quick, and maybe it's time we get these answers wrung out, so that we don't...
Well, we have time, so what we can do is go through what you, like, everyone agrees on the text. That's going to be the most time-consuming. We have two meetings next week of CARA, and we have a Thursday night planning commission. So we can still be able to, you know, you know, get this totally brought back in final format, you know, for those two meetings, and we have to...
With answering all the questions that have come up tonight?
Well, so far, there's only two that really has to be, find out from state law. And there's other cities that have this tax, so it should be very easy to find out, so, on what the process is.
So just to clarify, you were talking about, Chris, about the state, state would collect the 5 cents and turn around and send it out, so they don't charge any fee for processing that?
They probably do, I would imagine.
So I'm just...
I don't think so.
Well, let's add that to the list of checks, you know, if we're not going to net 5 cents, that's an issue.
Yeah, I'll find out. We did ask those questions, but I think it's been about a year and a half ago, so I'll have to find that memo.
Yeah.
And again, like Sharon says, there's other cities that collect that tax, so they should be able to tell us pretty easily.
It's sort of the same as, you know, our hotel tax, the same way that state processes it, or the marijuana tax, all of that, then they distribute it.
Yeah, I could go along with Rich's, making that a retail motor vehicle fuel sold rather than wholesale.
Yeah, impose a tax on retail, you said. Does everyone want that as retail?
Sure, yeah, we don't want to tax farmers.
So we also need to decide, do you want added in residential neighborhoods? Do you want that added to the summary?
I'm not hung up on that. I'd like to see that, but it's not a deal...
Spend the money where it's best spent, as long as, and it has to be on streets and roads. I don't think we need to specify residential.
You don't want residential? Bill, what about you?
But like I say, I'm not hung up either way.
It just seems like, you know, the most, the majority of the money that we collect, or the money that's made available for any of this maintenance, seems to be spent on arterials and collectors.
That'll lose a break out.
And I don't know about your street, but mine used to get sealed, I'm on a cul-de-sac, but it used to get sealed, you know, as needed, I wouldn't say it was every year. But I think there's some value to having this dedicated for residential, because whatever the funding source is there, the money that's going to be, that is available, staff's going to argue, well, the arterials and collectors are more important. And I wouldn't disagree with that, but, you know, you could, let's talk about alleys. There's no funding source for alleys.
Sure there is. It's the businesses, in the back of the business, they go out there with some comb packs.
What about residential alleys?
The council can direct staff to allocate the money wherever they feel it's needed and appropriate at that time. I mean, if, you know, in a year, if you say we need to devote it all to residential, staff can be directed by council to do that, and spend it that year on residential, but then, you know, in another year, maybe, maybe something else needs to be fixed. And what Chris was saying is, if you limit it to residential now, and then change your mind, you have to go back to the voters for another, for another ballot measure, another vote. And that's the only, that's the only drawback to that that I see, but either way, it'll work.
And you could even add some wording, you know, the priority will be on residential streets, or...
To have that flexibility, indicate, the intent is to spend on residential streets,
but like Sean says, you've got some flexibility, and Chris was saying the same thing.
That's a good idea, I like that.
If things change a little bit, you don't have to go back to the voters.
What's 13th off of Jackson?
13th off of Jackson?
That's a residential.
Residential.
Is it? 13th off of Jackson?
On the industrial side or the other?
Yeah, on the other side.
That wouldn't be residential.
That's not residential, and it's not a feeder street. I mean, Commercial Way is not a feeder street, and it's not residential, either one. We have another group of streets that we're not looking at.
Well, I think generally, when you're saying residential streets, the classification is a local street.
Yeah.
And it's not a, you know, so we, most of our local streets are residential streets, but the correct term is a local street, which is defined as a street that's really intended to, you know, you get off collectors and arterials, and you get to your destination.
And maybe we should call it local streets.
A local street.
Well, the problem with that is, the voters look at it as...
And they don't know what a local street is.
They sure as hell hope you spend it on a local street.
Well, but if they don't, okay, you're a generic voter. I say it's going to be for residential streets. And then, there's 13th Street going down past, you know, wait a minute, there are no houses there.
Or Industrial Way.
I just think...
Industrial Way, yeah, same thing.
Yeah, my point is...
Ferry Street.
I wouldn't even know what a local street was without the explanation Chris just gave.
And that part is where, where we have been spending our current funding on is a lot of where it's the businesses, and that, this is where we hear from citizens, they want residential streets, but it's, a lot of it is for preservation, which is going to be some crack ceiling. We have got, how many miles do you think in the city that need to be, that could use crack ceiling?
Right, I mean, we don't, so our practice is focused on arterials and collectors. And, you know, really, it comes from the strategic plan on down. So the strategic plan goal only talks about arterials and collectors. And so when we, as our money has gotten tighter, we used to do a lot of crack ceiling on residential streets, at least. I mean, there were slurry seals, that went away because we're out of money. There was, we're still crack sealing, well, that's pretty much gone away too. So we mostly crack seal collectors and arterials now, and residential streets are getting virtually no treatment, local streets, not residential streets. You know, so, it's true. And, you know, really, when we are like, well, where should I spend my money this year? We fall back on those, you know, policy documents, and that's how that's happened.
I think what Bill said was, that's a good point, we could add a sentence, and we have plenty of room to do it, that in, whether it's local or residential, that after, the end of that, after improvements, then another sentence priority will be given to residential streets or local streets. And that way, it indicates what the money is intended for, and yet doesn't tie the city's hands and force them to go back out for another vote if they want to repair an arterial street or something, so.
And maybe something like local slash residential.
Right.
That way people can identify with what we're talking about.
I have a question. Is Hill Street a residential street or an arterial collector?
Sorry, which one?
Hill.
Hill is a collector, major collector.
But it's all, it's not considered residential?
It's a neighborhood.
It's a neighborhood, so...
Well, it's, so the street classification depends on the purpose of the street, and Hill Street is, serves more than just the people that live in the houses off of Hill Street a lot. It's a collector's street. It connects arterials to local streets, that's what a collector's street does.
So does Washington Street.
And I think Washington, I'm not, well, I'm not going to say, I'm not going to guess.
It was originally Highway 99.
No way.
Dick, you're that old.
Yeah, I think it might be a minor collector, but I'm not going to square it out.
So Sean, you're going to come up, you're going to add local and residential to it? Or you want him to add local and...
I would she tell me.
Local and residential streets?
Local slash residential.
What, local slash residential?
I think Sean's proposal was excellent.
Local slash residential.
I appreciate it.
So that's on the summary. The other two are just, Section 3 and Section 4 is just sort of standard there, is there any...
Just one, again, a comma in Section 5. I would suggest having a comma after ballot title.
Comma after ballot title, okay.
The resolution comma, including the proposed ballot title, comma, shall be delivered to the city clerk.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
Yes, there will be one difference in this, when you say it again. Section 4 references an ordinance, and in Exhibit A, we will not be doing that. The ordinance will come out, if the voters approve the measure in May, then we'll come back with an ordinance, so it'll say, if a majority of the legal voters... So it should, it'll say if a majority of the legal voters of the city voting on this measure, approve this measure, it shall take effect on July 1st, 2018. That will come back in the form of an ordinance though, and at that time, the ordinance will be prepared, not, not with this resolution, so.
Okay, all right. Got that. Now, council, can you go to the next page? Or is any more questions under summaries, all those sections? Okay, now the explanatory statement. From what the original that was emailed out, the third paragraph was changed. Well, I see that, let's start with the first paragraph. "The measure, if approved, would authorize the city of Albany to impose a motor vehicle fuel tax at the rate of five cents per gallon for motor vehicle fuel sold or delivered in Albany." How does that?
I need to change it to retail.
Yeah, I have to add the retail into that.
So retail...
Motor vehicle.
Motor vehicle.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Okay, the second paragraph. "If approved, this fuel tax is expected to generate 1.25 million per year. The proceeds would be dedicated to the maintenance and improvement of Albany's streets."
Should it be that same local slash residential?
I would prefer it. What would you all prefer? Bill wanted that, Bill?
What?
On that second paragraph, it says dedicated to the maintenance and improvement of Albany's streets. Do you want it to say local slash residential streets?
Well, I don't know. I mean, you asked Sean if you want to be consistent.
Yeah, that's what I was going for, was the consistency.
So... Are we limited on words?
No, well, we are, but we're not close. So we're fine there. So the proceeds would be dedicated to the maintenance improvement of Albany's local slash residential streets. Could I make a suggestion and say the proceeds would be primarily dedicated? Because that, again, would untie the city's hands.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Primarily dedicated. Is that okay, everyone?
Fine.
Okay. Third paragraph, so this was changed than what was emailed out to us. So I'll read this paragraph, but I also want to read the one earlier, because I actually like that one better than this one. But you guys can decide. "Albany's street maintenance program does not receive any revenue from the city's general fund. I don't even like us putting down general fund and getting people to get mixed up on that or confused. Current funding for street maintenance is not adequate to meet the needs within the street system. Because of this, street maintenance activities are not performed at the ideal intervals. Postponing repairs leads to increased deterioration of streets and more costly maintenance or reconstruction." I, to me, I, it just seems like, sorry, mumble jumbo words. I'm sorry, Chris, I think I know you and Jeff came up with the language.
You know what? It's perfectly fine.
Okay.
Make it whatever you want it to be.
So what we originally had was, "Street maintenance is currently mostly funded by the city's share of state fuel tax funds."
Okay, so let me stop you there.
Okay.
Um, so, yes and no. I mean, that, that's not an entirely accurate statement, which is our concern. The street maintenance program is primarily funded from our share of state gas taxes, plus we get in lieu of franchise fees, and I think there's something else that's escaping me right now. That is accurate. However, most of the street repair work that is happening in town is funded through STIP funds, through state, you know, the Service Transportation Program funds that come through, basically from the federal government through ODOT, and we apply for it through the NPO now. So the street projects that are happening now, I mean, if you want to talk in pure dollars, way more dollars are being spent from Service Transportation Program funds than from state gas tax funds. So it's, it's a complicated, street maintenance is a complicated funding picture and, and...
So instead of staying, saying funded by the city's share of state fuel tax funds, how about from the share of state revenue funds or state sharing revenue funds?
State funds.
Well, Service Transportation Program funds are not anymore a state share proportion. We have to compete for those through the NPO, essentially. So I'm not sure that that's really the accurate wording either.
But it says mostly funded, so it's not saying everything. Saying mostly funded, we could say the city's share of state revenue sharing funds.
Well, just state funds.
Well, is it state funds or...
State and federal funds.
Yes, Service Transportation Program money comes from the federal government and then it's administered through ODOT and we, we have to apply for that.
So we could just say the city's share of state and federal funds?
Um, it is state and federal funds. It's not necessarily a, a share basis, you know, it's, SDP programs are not allocated based on population or mileage or any of those things. It's a, it is a priority ranking from the NPO. So it's, I think it's, it's a different word than share. This is really awkward to write this.
So it's the city's share of state and federal funds?
Yeah.
That's basically where it's coming from.
Okay.
Well, except if you say share, that denotes that it, there is just a piece that we always get.
Which is true.
No, it's not.
Not on any state funds.
Because we have to, we have to apply for it and we don't always get everything we apply for, correct?
Instead of shared, how about allocated?
Or we could just say mostly funded by state, or mostly funded by state and federal funds.
Well, isn't most of the gas tax?
It's mostly, it all comes through gas tax on state and federal.
It is federal gas taxes what funds the Service Transportation Program. Federal is federal, federal gas taxes. And the state gas taxes funds our street maintenance program.
So doesn't our money basically come from gas taxes then?
One, in one way or another, it's gas taxes plus a little bit of in lieu of franchise fee revenue from water and sewer.
So street maintenance is currently mostly funded by state and federal fuel tax funds?
Yeah.
That is an accurate statement.
Okay. We found an accurate one.
And if you're making the point that gas taxes is what funds road repair and...
And, and the reason I put the general fund statement in the paragraph is because there is a common misconception that property taxes pay for streets and no, no property tax revenue goes to streets. So I was trying to make, be clear that there's not, there's not a connection between I pay my property taxes and street maintenance. It's, it's a very common misconception which we can address through outreach.
Well, I think it's a complex issue, but one of the things you can try and educate people on is that...
Sean?
Yes.
Do we have enough room for, we say, we got a lot of words enough to use, can we put that entire, after we word process this paragraph here, to put this entire paragraph in addition to the new, the second revised one we got?
Well, yes, we, we could, I think, what the mayor's saying is she has some issues with the language and...
But the way the language to me doesn't really say a lot to the voter, and I really don't like us even mentioning about the city's general fund. I mean, why get it mixed up? This is, this is on our separate street front. Let me finish the rest of this paragraph that we originally had in our email. So this would be changing, "Street maintenance is currently mostly funded by state and federal fuel tax. This funding source has failed to provide sufficient funds to maintain," I added this, "approximately 250 miles of city streets." So it would get, it would let the voters be able to kind of look at the whole big picture. It's not just their neighborhood, their street. We have 250 miles of city streets to maintain. "Under Oregon law, net revenues from fuel taxes may be spent only on construction, reconstruction, improvement, repair, maintenance, operation, and use of city streets."
High votes yesterday, you got the shall be spent rather than may be spent?
Yep, yep, instead of may, yeah, shall.
Only be, yes, yes, only, yeah.
And then, and then, so that would be, so it'd be either maybe that paragraph or this, the other paragraph. I just, I think the first paragraph, the first one statement that we had, to me, just seems more clear. We're just stating where our city's tax currently is coming from, and then it's looking at what state law, state tells us it can be spent on, and then really pointing out that we have 250 miles of city streets, approximately.
I reserve the right to go find the absolute correct mileage of city streets for the final version.
Well, I said approximately.
And I understand, but I know that these things, if they get challenged, they'll want, you know, one thing that gets challenged is precision.
And do we have the exact, exact number?
We have the exact number in our...
And would somebody drove it and said we were one mile off?
Well, I mean, we get more all the time with subdivisions, but I mean, it would be, you know, the exact number at the time it was written.
And we don't take county roads inside the city limits?
Right, we don't include county roads and ODOT roads.
Okay, so we can, we can change that number, but it just kind of gets...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you're okay if I change it to...
Yeah, it lets the voters really look at the whole big picture.
Sure, it's still a big number.
Yeah.
The more accurate it is, the more credible it is.
Okay, so, council, which, which would you prefer on those statements, on those paragraphs?
Which one are we looking at? The, the second one or the, or the one that the...
Well, to revise, the third one that's on the third paragraph would be changing it to the one we just discussed. Unless you want, like, the one that's here.
Well, I, I think it'd be easier to modify the one that was this, the one that was emailed to us previously, where, and changing it to the mostly funded by state and federal fuel tax, having the fuel taxes shall be spent. But what about the two paragraphs preceding it? Are we going to be using...
Oh, I think that, staff took that part out of the revised one.
So the proceeds, the proceeds one would be gone?
Right.
Okay.
That one would be gone, the one that talked about saving up dollars for...
Okay, I'm just going to read, I'm just going to read it to see if, to see if it makes sense the way I've got it written down.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just going to read it to see if it makes sense to the way I've written it down.
Okay.
"Street maintenance is currently mostly funded by state and federal fuel tax funds. This funding source has failed to provide sufficient funds to maintain, or maintain X miles within the city, with, uh, main, within city streets. Under Oregon law, net revenue, revenues from fuel taxes shall be spent only on construction, comma, reconstruction, comma, improvement, comma, repair, comma, maintenance, comma, operation, comma, and use of city streets."
Yep. Right, you got it.
Comma and?
Yes.
Comma and?
That is the one that hung the city in Maine for five million bucks.
I think there's got to be more to that than, than, they didn't put a comma and they were charged five million bucks, though. It's got to be, it may have meant a different meaning or something to it, I didn't mean...
Yes, yes.
Maybe if you can also, Ray, find that link to that, maybe have Sean look into that to make sure...
Is he on with the case?
Yeah.
He's talking about, yeah, I think he may have...
The rule says you don't put a comma before the word in.
Yeah.
Well, journalistically, they don't use it in, in most newspapers and things, but legally, it hung, it hung a dairy in Maine just recently.
A lot of these, these clauses, the, the way they're structured are coming from models from League of Oregon Cities and different ones that, and they're not using, so it's a stylist thing, I get it. I mean, and I don't, I don't have a preference. It doesn't, in this case, putting the comma there doesn't make it less legal or more legal. And in that case that you sent me, I'll read it tomorrow to verify, but I'm sure what it did was it, it had, it made something have a different meaning or not have a meaning to it.
That's what the court came down with.
As opposed to just saying, well, you didn't put a comma, you didn't capitalize your, your word, so you, you penalized five million dollars, so...
I'll send the link, I'll send that news link to everybody.
Okay.
Okay. So what Ray just had read, is everyone okay with having that statement on for the third paragraph and not the other third paragraph that was handed out tonight?
I don't think it makes a difference.
Dick, you okay? Bill?
Okay.
Okay?
It doesn't make any difference.
And then, Mayor, that would have us remove the fourth paragraph then, because I think we incorporated that language into that paragraph about, under Oregon law, the revenues may be spent only on construction, reconstruction.
Yeah, that would come out.
Okay.
All right. So I think, so I think we have it. We went through the caption, the question, summary, and that was going to be adding about local slash residential streets. And then the explanatory statement would be from the, would be putting back in the original third paragraph.
And you're going to...
With the modification.
And we can get together, maybe you can get together that?
Yeah.
And then to answer your question, council, we have, I'll verify it just now, it's 500 words on that explanatory statement, so we have a lot of room to put stuff in. I thought it was, but I didn't want to say when I grabbed a lot of the other numbers there, so I had to verify it, but it's 500 words.
Okay, and staff is going to check on state law over, actually, how do they implement the program of disperse the funds? And then also the, how they identify vehicle fuel, motor vehicle fuel on that, how they tax it.
And whether they will charge us for collecting it as well?
Yeah.
Right.
I think there's usually administrative fee that's done through, you know, motel tax and all that, so, yeah. It's all going to be going up to the state.
Percentage or a flat fee? Or a flat fee? If it's a flat fee, it wouldn't cost us anything.
Yeah.
Because we, we're just adding to what we'd normally get.
We, we looked up exemptions for wholesale, which is not uncommon. So, you know, making it, specifying a retail establishment is not unusual, so...
So by us adding retail, then that takes away the wholesale one?
Right.
Right, okay.
So you're going to email us the revised, revised revision so we can all...
I will make changes to everything tonight, with the exception of that last paragraph, and then me and the mayor will coordinate tomorrow and I'll change that as well and I'll send it all back over.
Yeah, so then we'll have it sent out so you can, you know, look it over, and then next Wednesday, we have CARA, so we'll probably do, do another, either special meeting right after our ARA for council meeting. And then, and then hopefully there's no changes. The, we do have another meeting the next night, but I do believe it needs to get in by Friday?
23rd.
The 23rd, yeah, so...
I mean, Mary has to get it to, to the state by the 23rd, so we probably would need to have it in on Thursday, so I would say Wednesday's probably our...
Wednesday night to have that done. Okay, any questions? More questions on?
I, I just have a problem with us doing the hurry up. And because I perceive the hurry up is about, let's make sure we can get it in for May. And the specific reason for that is because May is not going to have as nearly as many people voting as in November.
Well, no, we're not going to be paying for it.
Well, if you wouldn't pay it for it in November, because it's a regular...
We wouldn't in November, but you know how that goes, it's an election time, you have a lot of other stuff on the ballot.
You have a lot of people who would vote. And my problem is, well, we just had 101. So basically, the majority of 30 some percent of people said we should tax ourselves on our medical insurance. And it was, it was done that specifically, so it would be a very low outcome, and I don't think that's honorable.
So we know how it would be for November, and then the next year, we would have to pay for it, and I think we are due to be going back out for our police and fire levy at that next year. We don't want to be having two questions to the voters at the same time. But this has been brought up in a discussion for almost four years now, so this isn't nothing new. And then, the council did give direction last November to look at bringing this for the May ballot, so this is where we're at, we're getting the statement done up to get it put on the May ballot.
Would Gene say it's been, he's been looking at it for 50 years, or something, always been kicking the can down the road?
It's still, it's still a whole lot fewer people voting, and I think we're picking it for the low number of people, and that bothers me.
Well, and I think that can probably be anytime, because usually, even the general for a, this general coming up is not a high vote turnout anyway, whenever it ends up being just the, you know, state races on that. It's not a big turnout. That would have to be in another two years, whenever it's a presidential rate, is always, race is always the highest voter turnout. So, you could use the same argument in November. While it's not high enough turnout, should we go out the next year?
Well, it's the regular election.
Yeah, so it's no matter what, we'd kick the can down the road, but it's not, I mean, if you don't want the tax, vote no when you get your ballot, but let's let the citizens have a right to vote for it.
Is there anything else on the May ballot?
The May ballot is all of the precincts that get mailed out to folks, and I don't know if there's other items that are going to be on it, but it's usually a pretty lengthy, you know, ballot anyway.
Well, it's precinct, precinct people.
Right.
This is the governor, this is the governor's election.
Oh, yeah, the governors, yeah, primaries and all that, so there's going to be quite a bit. It'll be contested for primaries, so there'll be a good voter turnout, but, but yeah, so, and, you know, sort of kind of, we've asked, remember Ray Hiltz has come here many times asking us, just let the voters decide, it's one of those questions, and we'll really know their sentiment, you know, on the outcome on it, so, but...
I have to say, if we've been working on this since November, why are we coming down to the wire to get this done? I don't understand.
Well, and, and that ended up just, I remember back November saying that it was going to be probably like February that we have to have it done, and then with January, we had a lot on our plate, a lot of us were sick, a lot of us absent, and it just, you know, fell through the cracks, but at least...
Well, it's a pretty big crack.
But we're still here, we can still get it in on time, so...
I don't like being rushed.
So, it's better than being after the deadline and then dawn on us, so...
It's, just seems to me like we're rushing through something unnecessarily.
So, okay, well...
That's what I say.
Yeah, okay. With that, thank you, counsel, we went through that, and business from the council this evening. Bill, anything?
Thanks.
Okay, Dick?
Yeah, even though there are, it's late, a couple of things. One, we decided on extending the sewer on Skyline Terrace, and for just one customer, Mr. Burl. And since that time, other neighbors have...
Oh, Dick, we're not supposed to bring that, that's supposed to be at the next work session, they're coming to the work session.
Oh, they're going to come to the work session? I thought we were going to bring it up tonight.
Nope, nope, that's what was decided at that meeting, they're coming to the work session to bring it up.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was thinking it was tonight, but I don't see it very so here. Anyway, the mayor and I met with the neighbors, and they're anxious to modify that project and have, I think, four more people on the project. It'll make it a lot more cost-effective for the, for Mr. Burl and the rest of them, so I was glad to see that.
Yeah.
And the other question I've got is that light at the intersection of Queen and Gary, and when can we consider that again? Do we have to wait till our contract is up, or can we consider it sooner?
Well, I think that can come back to us when staff kind of gives us sort of an update on what was presented to us.
So, the staff is planning to bring that back to us?
Yeah.
But I see a phone on the manager's face.
See, I was talking, I was talking to the attorney, say that again?
On the red flag.
Well, the, the light, it...
Oh, yes, that's a note to myself to, the, at the end of his presentation here where the blue tab is?
Yeah.
He's got a couple of slides which boil down, I think, what his assertions are.
Right.
So, we'll look at those.
And my question is, when can we consider whether we're going to continue to have that light there, or when, or would we decide that it's just an unnecessary annoyance to the public in general, and get rid of that light?
Or just to the people who go through, right? Because most of them, stop.
Some of us, I think, well, we're not going to jeopardize ourselves, we'll just stop there and wait. People honk, by heck with it, we're just going to wait, not, not turn until the light turns green.
Roll down your window and wave that they honk.
Like that.
Well, that's a California howdy.
Yeah.
I wouldn't do a nasty thing like that.
Oh, yeah, right.
So, that'll come.
It'll come back.
It'll come back to us.
Soon?
Well, I just need to talk to the police chief and the attorney. As soon as we can.
Yeah, we'll have to look at the contracts. We, I believe the contract was renewed last year, and see what the term of that contract is, so that we're not, we don't break that contract.
Seven years, is that what it is? Or can we...
That seems long, I'm not sure. I have to look at it, the contract.
Well, we originally got it in, yeah, '06, '07, yeah.
And do we have to go through the full length of that contract before we can talk about it, or can we, what happens if we break a contract? I'd like to hear that.
Well, let us address his questions here, and bring all the people together that have to talk about it, and I will bring it back to you as soon as we can.
Yeah.
So, I just want to tell you, I'm going to ask that question.
Okay, is that it, Dick?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, Rich?
Yes, I have one. We have been having issues inside and outside the UGB with people wanting to change things on their property, and it occurred to me that we have pretty good-sized pressure on us with not a lot of wonderful places for us to expand. I mean, I mean, a lot of our expansion has to do with Corvallis and, and 28,000 people at, at Oregon State being the kind of relief valve for Corvallis. I'm wondering, do we know how much land we have in, that is available for apartments, that is inside the city and just outside the city, in the urban, urban growth area outside the city? For apartments and for houses?
It wouldn't be outside the city limits, because that's not, you know, that's not applied to zoning yet, until it's in the city, but we do have a buildable lands inventory in the planning department that lists how much acreage that we have for each type of zoning.
Yeah. I'd like to know that for apartments.
Yeah.
Second, our limitation because of wetlands and that kind of thing for available land use inside the city even, has been deleteriously affected because of rules from DEQ and EPA, et cetera, for years. And is it time that we looked outside the city limits to the urban growth, closer to the edge of the urban growth boundary, to increase the size of the city? How much land we have, what kind, what kind it is certainly would have an effect, but I think it's time to look at that, because it won't be long before what we have is the prime spots used up. I mean, as you, as you go through, you know, where people are building and what they're building, I mean, the apartment market is tight, to say the least. We have, our average is higher here than it is in Salem, according to information I have gotten, and certainly, of course, higher than in Lebanon, Northeast. The only place it's, it's lower than is Corvallis, and that's because of the proximity to OSU, so...
Rick, Christopher, I'm not sure I follow you. Are you proposing we annex more property into the city, or are you proposing that we attempt to extend the urban growth boundary?
No, annex property into the city inside the urban growth boundary.
So, that's a very contentious issue, and we are not going to be resolving that one tonight, so...
Of course not.
Yeah.
That's why I'm asking for information on what's available to see if we can come up with some kind of knowledge base.
So, we do have that buildable lands inventory, so we do have the number.
And where they're at.
Right, and there, there is still sufficient land that is annexed into the city, might not be maybe what somebody wants for location, but that, there's, you'd be surprised, I think, if you saw how much.
That's why I want to see it.
I'll ask Bob Richardson to get in touch with you.
Yeah, and, and with apartments, I did get a, about every month, I get sort of a steady update of what vacancy rates are, it's through Albany Partnership that comes through. Albany, for some reason, recently has gotten higher in vacancies in apartments, for market-rate apartments. So, Salem was like 2.3%, and Albany is 3.6%, so we're almost the highest now in this rate, yeah, for vacancy, and, but that's not for low-income, income-based. Albany Partnership is 0% vacancy, 400 on a waiting list, but for market-rate rents, we've gotten higher, so...
Well, the market has gone up dramatically.
Yeah, so it kind of, you know, and that's where if newer apartments are coming online, they're going to have to maybe look at making sure that they're going to be attractive-type units if they're going to want to be able to fill up their units, so I don't think we're going to be seeing just the boilerplate-type apartments. You know, there's not going to be, there's going to be more competition now with that, so it's sort of, the market's changing some with it. Okay, anything else, Rich? Okay, Ray?
Just to what Rich was asking, I think we have a huge area of buildable land and even a plan to go in, the South Albany Plan. We can encompass an incredible number of homes, apartment complexes, all sorts of things, and it's just waiting for somebody, developer, to come in and say, let me do it.
And to that, the hand shop property.
Yep, 100 acres.
Yeah, people were out there working, and all of a sudden, it stopped. What, how come?
I haven't seen, well, they were doing wetland studies or some, it's sold so many different owners, I don't even know who owns it now, so, yeah, but... Yeah, anything else, Ray?
Hand shop.
Okay, Mike?
Dick and Rich covered the two things, two of the things that I was going to mention, but Albany Helping Hands has got a plan that they're working on to develop low-income housing on some property, and it looks promising, and it looks exciting to help people that are less fortunate to get back up on their feet. I was real excited to see it, and they're working hard to make that happen. So, that was the, the third thing.
So, are they going to vote it and manage it?
Yep.
Was it that?
Tell you offline.
Okay, yeah. Okay, all right.
That's all I had.
The only thing I have is, I always ask if it's okay to put the city letterhead on a letter. I was asked to write a letter in support for Mr. Rush Trip for the Chambers DSA banquet, so I did get the letter written, sent it off to Janet, and she wanted it with the city's letterhead on it, so I wanted to get your approval to put that.
For Rush Trip?
Yeah, on that, so, okay, thank you, take care of that. That's it, Peter?
Nothing.
Nothing? Staff have anything?
Compliment Jorge, I'm in the complimentary mood tonight, but Jorge, Jorge did a really good job. We had a big, I'm trying not to use the name, but a person who got a bid on some stuff that wanted to change our contract again, and I objected to some of the language and wanted it removed, and they pushed back, and it was contentious, and Jorge did some hard bargaining, and they backed down, so I just wanted to congratulate him on that, so...
Thank you, Jorge, yeah, good job, yeah.
You got it in you, Jorge.
Okay, so I commend 10 o'clock. It's Valentine's Day, and look how many residents stayed and watched, you know, an exciting life everybody has, spends a Valentine's Day watching our council meetings.
We'll start selling popcorn next week.
Yeah, I know, well, thank you, folks, for coming, so we have a work session on February 26, and regular sessions on 28, but we do have two meetings next Wednesday and Thursday. We're adjourned, thank you.